I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of December 10th, 2015. Do you all take your seats? Thank you. The records show that all the commissioners are present, as well as staff, and party number of people in the audience, which is good. Are there any -- oh, first of all, would you join with me with a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheers to that. Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes today?
No.
Okay. Next, we'll have our public comment period. If there's somebody in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission on a land use item that is not on our agenda today, that would be your opportunity.
My name is Bill McManus. I'm with Calaveras Project. First of all, I want to thank the Commission for all their heavy lifting recently. It's always a pleasure to get here. Can't hardly wait for the asphalt stuff to come up again. It's fun for all of us. In any case, we have a compression of time on a very important issue happening right now in the county, and that's on the adoption of ordinances that will protect us from the state scheme on AB 266. The deadline is March 1st for us to have operable ordinances in place, which means that really has to be passed or approved 30 days prior to that. It now appears as though that probably is not going to happen. October and November seem to be -- have been dithered away when we could have been working on this, and now it's going to be in a very compressed time schedule with holidays intervening and get to a point where I've been told by county council that it's at least a possibility that whatever you've -- whatever you look at and whatever the board looks at will have to be approved on an urgency basis, which requires four fifths approval, so that it's in place instantly as soon as the vote is taken to satisfy the requirements of AB 266. I've been trying to push this through and get some things done. It appears as though no one is willing to step on the gas, so I'm going to try. At the last meeting, which seemed like it was only a week ago, maybe it was, I gave you a letter requesting that the Planning Commission seriously look at some of the ordinances necessary to get in place. In talking with a supervisor unnamed, I was told if you don't like the pace, maybe you should do it yourself. So, in the spirit of DIY, do-it-yourself government, I have produced an ordinance. It's in front of you now, and so if you would at least look at it, see if it's something that you could get along with, hopefully it will make its way through the Planning Commission and be considered a viable alternative to whatever the board comes up with on the 22nd. They will be presented with two options. I don't know what they're going to do. If the Planning Commission likes this alternative, you can recommend it forward to the board supervisors for consideration when they take their final vote or do their final deliberation on the issue. So, I just want to get it in front of you. I know I'm obnoxious about it, but I won't let things -- leave things to chance, and I've done my best to produce an ordinance that hopefully is workable, and with a minimum amount of effort from county council's office, they can clean it up, fill in some numbers, and do whatever they have to do to make it ready to go. So, I appreciate your attention to these matters over the past year. You've been polite. You've paid attention. I couldn't ask for any more than the service that the Planning Commission provides for this county, and I want to personally thank each and every one of you, regardless of our political persuasions.
Mr. McManus, I know that I hate to interrupt you while you're giving us nice thoughts, but your time is up.
Well, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda, which we have none today, so then we will move on to our public hearings. The first is 2015-075, Appeal of 2015-002 Administrative Use Permit for California RSA Number 3LP Doing Business As Verizon Wireless. So, I will turn it over to you, Darcy.
Good morning. Peter, could I ask you to just flip one of the lights so they can see a little bit better? Before the commission today is an appeal of a planning director's approval of an administrative use permit, 2015-002, for Verizon Wireless. That AUP included six new antenna, equipment shelter, and an increase of the height of the tower, which was previously approved for 50 feet. The location of the tower is at 3218 Bow Drive in Copperopolis. Before you on the screen is an aerial. You can see the indication of the 3218 Bow Drive. Obviously, there's a lot of trees there, so you can't get a great visual, but in this area right here is where the existing cell tower and equipment shelter is located.
I'm sorry, the cell tower is the red dot or somewhere else?
The red dot is just the address indicator. The cell tower is in this area right here.
Oh, okay.
And the big --
Those are CCWD water tanks.
Okay, just curious.
Thanks. A little bit of background for the commission and the public. In 1984, a conditional use permit, which was required at the time for telecommunications facilities, was approved for a 50-foot tower, equipment box, and four mounted antennas.
Are you saying that today a CUP would not be required for the tower?
Today, an administrative use permit is required, and that was modified in the code by the board in November of 2004. So, that also included the four mounted antennas. In 2014, a building permit was issued for six new antennas and equipment box. Unfortunately, that permit did not come across the planning department counter, so we were not made aware of it until a few months later. In November of 2014, the planning department did notify Verizon Wireless that an administrative use permit would be required for those modifications that were made, which included that increase in height and those new antennas. In January of this year, they did submit for an administrative use permit. There were some changes made to the site plan, and noise analysis was done, a CEQA document was prepared and circulated, and then October of this year, that AUP was approved. Within the required 15 calendar days, we did receive two appeals. So, although we received two, you're hearing them under one application today. The first one was received by Copper Cove at Lake Tulok Owners Association, and the second one was received by an adjacent landowner, Dan and Ann Hadley. There were several issues outlined in those letters. Some of them were similar, so we kind of grouped them together. The first issue that was raised in the Owners Association letter was that their architectural control board and their association had not approved the project. So, what was outlined in your staff report in terms of a staff response is that the county does not regulate CCNRs. We don't regulate individual review boards of homeowners' associations. So, what they were asking for was a delay in taking action on the application. Because we don't regulate those, the county didn't see any need to delay taking action on the administrative use permit. Excuse me. Another issue that was raised by the Owners Association was driveway access. It appeared on the plans that there was driveway access, but they wanted time to review it. So, what staff's response is there is an existing paved driveway access to the back of the site where the cell tower is currently located. It is off of Bow Drive, and it has been there since the tower was installed, and it is adequate for county standards. The next issue that was raised was the site needed to be cleared of dead wood and dry grass. The county wasn't made aware of an issue that the Owners Association had with dead wood or dry grass until we received the appeal letter. Certainly, the state does require, there's state codes that require that a property owner abate weeds and dry grass. So, if the commission does feel that there is a need to add a condition, you can in regards to the abatement of the dead wood and the dry grass. The next issue, I'm going to skip over and come back because it seems to be the main issue, which is the equipment shelter and the noise it generates. Another issue that was raised actually by both are maintenance hours. There was concerns that maintenance occurs at all times of the night. So, in order to address that concern, we did place a condition of approval that required maintenance be done during the normal operating hours. However, if they do need to do some sort of maintenance in off-hours, which basically would take that tower off the grid when less people are using it, they're required to provide the county and the adjacent landowners a 72-hour notice. So, there's concern that there's no limit on how often they can do that. So, if the commission wishes to modify that condition or add something to it to address maybe how many times a year it is within your purview to do that. There was another concern about inconsistency on plans and how throughout the process, the tower was noted as being an existing tower when really it wasn't approved to be that height. So, a little bit of background is when Verizon purchased the property in their due diligence, you did receive a letter from Verizon that kind of explains, you know, their process. They do a survey, and at that time, the tower was 64 feet. So, when they purchased it, it was 64 feet. It was originally only approved for 50. I'm unable to track down through building records when that increase happened, so I don't know when it went from 50 to 64. The tower is now at 62, so there is confusion in that letter that you received yesterday from Verizon. It states that it's currently at 64 feet. That was the pole's height before they came in for that building permit last year and got approval. It is now at 62.
Before you leave that slide, Darcy, you made the comment that the county did not see a need to -- for a delay, but would it be more appropriate to say that the county can't delay it on the basis of the homeowners' association appeal because of the disassociation in terms of authorities?
Correct. That is correct. So, going back to the equipment shelter and the noise, which is through the process been the largest concern and issue that we've dealt with. Originally, when the concern was brought to staff's attention, we did go out to the site. A previous planner, who was the project planner on this project, went out to the site. It was determined that there was probably a noise impact, so acoustic analysis was required. The outcome of that analysis was a couple different things. The applicant Verizon agreed to move the equipment shelter to a more centralized location on the property, and you'll see that in some upcoming slides. They also, the engineer that prepared the analysis stated that by installing a wood fence and an acoustical curtain, it would reduce the maximum decibel levels to 48, which is within what the code requires. The maximum decibel level for the code is 50, so they're meeting that level by two Another comment that was brought up in terms of the equipment shelter is to, it should have been a block wall that surrounded it. The acoustical analysis didn't indicate that they're required to do a block wall. It said with the wood fence and that curtain, it needs the threshold, so one is not proposed at this time. So, just to give you a little bit of an idea what you're looking at, this is the full project site, adjacent parcels. This is the Hadley's. CCWD owns this. Another neighbor, another neighbor here. This is Bow Drive. So, the site currently, you would enter and come back this way. The current tower and equipment shelter are back here. What the approval was for was to relocate that equipment shelter to here. The tower stays here. A wood fence goes around the tower. A wood fence goes around the equipment shelter, and then there's an acoustical curtain. And you'll see some photographs from the site in a moment. These are the elevations that were prepared and presented with the application. You can see that the tower in its current location will remain. The chain link fence will be removed, and a wood fence will go up around it. Just down the hill is where the new equipment shelter will be with a wood fence around it and that acoustical curtain, which is a mitigation measure, and it is part of that approval of that project. And that is just to clarify, this is a six-foot tall wood fence. This is just another elevation, so if you were looking more up the hill, what you would see from Bow Drive up the hill, the equipment shelter in front and the tower in back. Some site photographs of what the site currently looks like when it was visited, or what it looked like when it was visited in February of this year. So, you can see right now, it's a chain link fence. That is the cell tower that was erected as part of that building permit. It has the six new panels on it and the equipment shelters. Just another look for the commission to get just a better idea of what's out there now. And these views are just the views from the property site and from Little John Road just down the hill. This would be the tower location right here. This is the tower on the site. Not the best photographs, but just to get a little bit of an idea of what you're looking at. In terms of CEQA, the administrative use permit was subject to CEQA. We prepared an initial study, resulted in some mitigation, so we prepared a mitigating date that was circulated for the required 20 days, and that was adopted as part of the administrative use permit process. So, at this time, staff is recommending that the commission deny the appeal request, which would uphold the planning director's approval of Project 2015-002, which is an administrative use permit for Verizon Wireless. I can answer any questions you have. Both the appellants are here, as well as a representative from Verizon.
Any questions to Darcy right now?
With respect to the dead wood and dry grass issue, are there other rules that govern that in place?
There's required state fire codes that mandate that, but you could certainly add a condition of approval if it is a concern.
The Hadley appeal says that the original CUP 94-29 stated that no noise will be emitted. Is that correct?
That's what the original one stated. That was done in 84.
Was that a condition of approval or just a description of the project?
I have, I don't believe I brought that one with me. It might have been a condition of approval.
It was.
I don't think I brought that permit with me, but I believe it was a condition of approval.
You talk about the original one?
The original from 1984.
Well, has this, has this project been emitting noise right along then?
I don't know if it has been emitting noise prior to them submitting the administrative use permit application. It's my understanding that when it was, when the building permit was issued and it was erected and the equipment started operating, maybe that's when the noise started to get, was generating, and then that's when planning became aware that all these modifications were made and that they needed the administrative use permit. So, they submitted that. Site visit was done in February, submitted in January. We did a site visit and determined there probably was a noise impact, and that's what triggered us to require that acoustical analysis. So, I can't say for certain that noise was generated prior to the new equipment box being installed, because I don't know what type of equipment was there, and we didn't receive any complaints to go out and look at it prior to that.
I'll have questions for Verizon, but I don't have any more for you, Darcy.
What is the source of noise from the site?
The source of the noise comes from the HVAC units, which cool the equipment. That's my understanding is where the noise is generated.
Air conditioner.
Right. So, with the use of the prefab shelter, the wood fence, and the acoustical curtain, that's what mitigates the noise to it.
Okay. We're talking about tower height, and we're talking about antennas. Antennas are stuck onto the tower, right? So, the antennas then effectively increase the total height? Is that, is that the issue? We're talking about adding antennas to an existing tower?
Right. So, there is an existing tower out there. It was originally approved for 50. It's our understanding, when they bought it, it was actually 64, so how that occurred, we don't know. But per the drawings that we have for this latest AUP approval, it is 62 feet in overall height. So, the pole itself could be a little bit lower, but it indicates that to the top of the pole where the antennas are at, that is 62 feet, so that's the maximum.
The maintenance issue, is it, is it a noise issue related to maintenance, or is it trucks coming and going?
I believe it's the noise, the trucks going and coming and going that they make, you know, at all hours of the night when folks are trying to sleep. That's my understanding from what I've been told.
Reference to the 50-decibel limit, page 4 of 5. It's actually in here a couple of times. On ordinance 9.02.030, the table is on page 4 of 11. Well, there's two or three table ones, but the one I'm looking at is, shows the levels for 030.
Yes.
Nighttime level 45. Am I wrong?
You are wrong. As I had stated in the staff report, this table was pulled from a board agenda packet, which was one of the first two iterations that the board saw when they looked at the noise ordinance. They changed at the second meeting. They increased that, those numbers from 45 to 50.
Okay, thank you for the reminder. Okay. There's reference in the, by the homeowners' association or one of the appellants to, oh, here it is, on page 3 of 5, references to an interior DBA level of 20. Okay?
Correct.
Now, what would be the relevance of an interior level DBA to the process here?
So, what you're looking at is actually a table that was pulled from a noise study that was done to support the noise element of the general plan update. So, it's something that has not been adopted by the board at this time. So, the relevance of that to this project is you can't, you can't look at this project and base it off of this, but in terms of, you know, the relevance for overall looking at it, it's what the quality of life and noise is on the inside versus the outside maximums.
Right. Now, a 50-decibel limit on the outside is a measurement taken some distance from the noise source?
Right. It's taken at how the ordinance reads is those, when those measurements are done, it's done at the property line facing the noise source.
At the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And depending on where you put the thing, if you put it more or less in the middle, then that's an accurate measurement, right? It's the same all the way around the property?
It should be, if you're trained properly in how to use the noise device.
Right.
Then you shouldn't get misreadings depending upon.
Okay, so I guess my real question is, when you take a 50-decibel, if you get a 50-decibel limit at the property line, 48, I think you said it was actually going to be, and so then you're within the noise ordinance, how does that translate into an interior noise at a residence some distance away from that?
Then presumably, the noise interior would be less.
Right.
It would be a product of the distance, increased distance away from the noise source as well.
Plus materials.
Kind of buffering effect of the walls and windows and those kinds of things.
Sure. So, for all, for all we know, the interior noise level at a residence nearest the site would be 20.
It could be depending upon the construction.
We just don't, we don't know. But we know that the decibel limits that are, that are in the ordinance are designed to produce interior decibel limits within that, those tables at a residence. Isn't there a correlation?
This table, I believe the one you're looking at, which shows some, it says common indoor activities is a, so the, it's not a standard. This is what's typical of a bedroom at night. It's about 20 decibels, which is basically imperceptible noise. You know, and you have different other, you know, like a business office is at 50, normal speech is 60. So, it's just providing an understanding of what different levels of decibel readings are, sort of common.
Not code limits.
It's not code limits, it's just, this is what's common.
Can I hear Jack one thing? That's possible.
We'll be opening the public hearing soon.
Is the left side? The exterior is low.
Can you, sir? Thank you.
Okay. Lastly, the authorities involved here, the homeowners' association, there's reference to, and on top of page 4 of 5, first top paragraph, last sentence, "The county needs to add a condition of approval for the applicant to receive approval from the homeowners' association before proceeding." That's, that's their claim. But there's no authority, one way or the other, on this, right? We don't, we don't control them, they don't control us. There's no, there's no law there.
Correct.
Any other questions right now with the commission? No? Would the appellant or the appellant's agent like to make a presentation at this time?
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If you're the appellant.
I apologize for interrupting you.
That's all right.
Darcy, would it be possible to put up the appeals list?
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry, my name's Dan Hadley. My wife and I are here. We're the property owners they talked about, we're the ones right behind it. And I guess I should start by saying.
Mr. Hadley, can I ask you a question? Will the Copper Cove homeowners' association be, are you speaking on their behalf? Are they here? I'm just trying to get a gauge on time.
You know, I don't know, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Dan is speaking because it directly involves him.
Okay. So, you'll be making, or are you going to be making a presentation as well?
Depending on where Dan goes and how soon he's coming off and whether he's.
Okay. Well, just so that you know, cumulative, you guys have about 15 minutes, so maybe you might want to allow some time for them as well.
Okay. Let me know if I'm getting close enough.
I will.
I hope not, too, to be honest with you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Hadley.
Like I said, we're the property owners directly behind it. The tower's in our backyard. We bought a property with a, with a tower in the back. There's no doubt about it. The, the use permit that was in effect when we bought our property allowed for a, the best way to describe it is a telephone pole. It was 43 feet tall. I've pointed out several times that it's, it was a 50-foot pole buried seven feet in the ground, so it produced an actual total height of 43 feet. If you go in the records, you'll find that's actually the case. And what was permitted at the bottom of that tower was a box that was 24 inches square and 54 inches tall and made no noise. And through the application process, there's several errors in that original thing I can point out, such as they said our house didn't exist, but it did at that time. We didn't own it, of course. And so, that's the basis of where we are as far as what's approved from a planning standpoint right now. Obviously, it became very messy last November when construction crews showed up in our backyard and started building a, for all intents and purposes, a fully new assembly. I don't believe there's any part of that assembly that is original, except for the portion of the pole that they cut off and the electrical panel. It's possible there's a portion of the concrete that's still original, but there's really not. When they came in and did that, I called the county and basically said, "What's up? They're in my backyard. They're doing a ton of work. What's going on?" And through a series of emails, which I'm sure are public record, eventually, the, the planning department talked to billing department, and they issued a stop work order. That was, those conversations occurred the week before Thanksgiving. The crew then became very active in their construction. I think if you subpoenaed, their construction records just showed they worked till midnight through the, through the Thanksgiving holiday, and by the time the stop work order was issued on December 2nd, they were complete and done, and the tower was working. It has run ever since. It has never turned off. Initially, it was running at 65 decibels. My decibel meter said it was 68. Their official came out with his equipment and read it at 65. That was in, I'm going to say March. I have the records in here, but roughly March. Verizon asked for a meeting with us. That's when we met at the site, and we looked at what possible options. That's when we met at the site, and we looked at what possible options there'd be for cutting the noise and the bulk of what they had assembled there. They do have a legal building permit. What happened was they missed the planning side of it. So, the county was at fault in not doing the proper processing for it. And I understand people make mistakes. But what occurred in that meeting with Verizon is we looked at what options there were to make it at least palatable. The first thing they offered, as soon as they realized they were 15 decibels over the legal maximum limit, is they offered to enclose the structure on three sides with plywood the next day, which was, which was very nice of them to do. And that cut the noise enormously. So, we went from 65 down to below 50 the next day. And we realized that they were working with us, trying to figure out how they could make this thing work. It's a commercial application in a residential neighborhood. And that's why we're asking you for fairness, and think about this like it's in your own In that meeting, what we discussed was them moving their equipment downhill that would reduce the bulk that they had added to the base of the tower. Because remember, it's only a 24-inch box this high that was approved. So, all the equipment you saw there, the idea was to move it downhill and get it out of the way, and surround it in concrete block wall to reduce the sound emanating in the three directions where there are neighbors. When we got their plan, they had moved it downhill, as agreed. They probably could have moved it farther, but that's here nor there. And they had surrounded it in a wood fence. And when, when the wood fence didn't meet the decibel ratings, they added the curtain to bring it to two decibels below the maximum county level. And so, that's where the design currently stands, is at 48 decibels. And that's the issue we have. I know we can't do anything with the association. I can't speak for them, other than the fact that they show no records of ever having approved it, ever having gone through a meeting. So, that's their issue. I really can't say much about that, because I know the county doesn't have a thing with it. For me, it's long-term, what I'm going to deal with in my backyard. And the bottom line is a, an assembly that is running at 48 decibels is a loud assembly to have in your backyard, running 24/7, 365, day and night, never stops. And that's what we're appealing to you, say, reduce it to what the ambient noise level is for the neighborhood. I know it's irrational to say something's going to run at zero decibels. If they can figure it out, I'm all for it. But bring it down to the roughly 20 to 30 decibels that, that would make it blend into the environment. On that sheet, and I apologize for speaking up in a part where I guess I wasn't supposed to, but if you look down the left side of that column with noises, it specifically states outdoor noise levels. And that's what we're trying to reference, at least in our appeal, that if you go down there, and a rural neighborhood at night, the county did a study, it may not have been accepted, but it's a study, that stated it was approximately 20 decibels. So, the difference between 20 decibels and 48 decibels, every 10 decibels is a doubling of the sound level. And I mean, I could tell you right now, but when we started this meeting, this meeting never exceeded 50 decibels. All this talking and everything is in my backyard, 24/7, 365. And that's all I'm asking that they reduce. As far as the nighttime work, how would you like somebody coming in your neighborhood with their lights shining it up on a tower, diesel trucks with all their equipment and whatnot, running at midnight or 2:00 a.m. for two or three hours a night? It's not all the time. Sometimes they just pull up, they check equipment, and they leave. By moving this equipment downhill, that'll reduce that. But it's still, the dogs light up, they start barking, there's all kinds of issues that go on in the middle of the night. That's the reason for that. And I appreciate them adding that to it. But my appeal is that they limit it, so that I don't get a letter every three days saying, "We're going to be there on Tuesday and Friday to do our equipment maintenance." All I'm asking is that they limit it. If a couple of times a year, they want to come in and they want to work on the tower through the middle of the night with their hammers and their wrenches and their light shining up on it, that's fine. I mean, we're neighbors, right? But that's what I'm trying to limit, because there is a potential, all they have to do is send out a letter every week, and they can come there every week and work through the middle of the night. And I don't know if that's rational or not, but that's what I'm fighting against. As far as driveway, I don't really care, to be honest with you. That's between the association and the other neighbor, because that doesn't really affect me. There are several dead wood, dead trees on the lot, and a lot of dry grass. The tree should be removed, just for fire safety, but please don't make them clear the lot, because then I'm just going to be looking at a cell tower in the middle of a grassy lot, and that's terrible. So, you know, I don't really have anything with that. And then, as far as inconsistency on the plans, I think it's unfair that a set of plans that is shown as existing, the only reason it's existing is because the county made a mistake in issuing a building permit. The reality is, what is existing in there is a 24-inch box, smaller than this, this tall, that makes no noise, and a telephone pole that at the time had two boxes on the top that looked like glorified mailboxes. They were like, yay, bye, yay. Admittedly, it's up there in the height. That's what's permitted. And that's, so there, I don't know if there's anything else I can say. I mean, we could talk about the fact that they shouldn't have issued a building permit. We should talk about the fact that it may have never been approved by association. But all I'm looking for is fairness for what's in my backyard. If they want to take their 48-decibel assembly and move it down the hill another 70 feet, I'm all for it. I have no issue with that. If they want to leave it where it is, not at the top of the property, but if they want to leave it 30 feet down the hill and add a block wall around it, so that it echoes the sound away from our properties, fully support that. It's not an engineering marvel that will require, requires a few thousand dollars worth of concrete block, and that's it. So, I guess the final thing, just as far as the architectural review board for our association is, I just honestly feel it's a shame that the building permit and planning permit process doesn't somewhere in there have a box that somebody checks that says, "We will not accept the plan if an architectural review board needs to accept it before we do." Because what's, is the association to go after Verizon or any homeowner and sue them to stop them from construction that a building department and a planning department have approved? So, I guess that's pretty much it. I don't know if I was clear on that 20 decibels, that's obviously the key point to it. There are studies from all over California that says that's what a rural residential neighborhood is at night. I chose that one personally, because that's Calaveras County.
They move the equipment down the hill, are their homes down below it? Or are you just above it, and that's it?
To my knowledge, there's neighbors on three sides.
So, if they move it down the hill, it moves it away from you and into somebody else?
No, not currently, but it would move it closer to another property owner. I'm assuming the property below it is owned by somebody. I couldn't tell you whether that's.
Can you clarify that, Darcy? Lisa's question.
So, you can see on here, there's Mr. Hadley's property, Go Drive. So, this is Go Drive down, this is a little bit of a steepness, but there are two homes down there as well.
You have to think about this like it's in your backyard. I mean, this meeting, so far, has averaged 43 decibels. It's five decibels less than what I have in my backyard, with all the speaking and everything.
Any, we may have further questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you. So, would the Copper Cove Lake Telec Owners Association like to make a presentation? Up to you guys.
My name is Jane Everett.
Well, could you wait until you get to the microphone? Thank you, Jane.
My name is Jane Everett, and I am the lead on the architectural. And Dan is right, I can find no records of approval going back to the very beginning of this project, or I did not approve anything that was done last year at Thanksgiving. Dan's right about the noise level. That concerns me, because yes, they're trying to be good neighbors, they want to move it down the hill. But you're right, it will affect the lot next door that wants to sell, that may not know anything about this. It will affect the lots across the street. My other thing is, that I'm concerned about, is we've now started something that we will have no control over later. How do I know that, that next year, they're not going to put more equipment on? Will that affect the noise level? What do they plan to do with this lot? The lot, the pole was set into the setbacks, which if the county had read those plans, would have seen that it didn't, it didn't adhere to the setbacks at all. And the pole is going to stay irregardless now, I guess, from whatever, you know, is going on. But this whole thing was, you know, when you dump it into somebody's lap and you just say, you know, "What happened?" I really don't, but I see all the inconsistencies that Dan is talking about. And what are they going to do in the future with this lot? Now, once they're in, can Sprint put, buy the lot next door? I mean, are we going to have a whole hillside of antennas? I mean, because really, an R1 zoning, it should have never gotten in there to begin with, I don't think. There's so much country and open space it could have gone in, and somehow, it was put in there. So, my concern is starting, being allowed to let Sprint, AT&amp;T come in, go wherever, do whatever. How much more equipment? How much noise level will be raised then? Will we be going through this same situation again? I mean, can you tell me if you think I would? Because I think I would. I mean, I don't, I don't know the answers to these questions. But Dan did a very good job of representing himself, and I agree with him. His noise level was taken from the Calaveras County noise level, not our noise level, your noise level. And I, and he presented it to you. So, we'd like to work with them, but I was told it's impossible to get it down to that. But yet, it's stated in your noise level program. So, why state something? And why do we have CCNRs and bylaws? And I understand it's very hard for you people. I wouldn't want your job for anything. But what do we have them for if every time we turn around, it's ignored? Or there's a secret part of whatever these people do that we don't know about? Because I was totally unaware. I was blindsided, and I really don't like being blindsided. So, that's not an excuse for what's going on. But I am definitely concerned with what's going on in our future. So, you'll have to make your decisions, but I'm backing Dan, and I agree with Dan, because I don't want the future of our association, our CCNRs and our bylaws. What are they for? What are we doing with this whole process? I, I don't get it, if we can just be blown away. I mean, that's what I feel like. So, thank you very much.
Could I take one more comment?
Sure. You still have a minute, two minutes left.
Okay, I'll be very brief then. I was able to get a stop work order. As near as I can tell, it's never enforced, because they completed the assembly. I was able to get a cease order from running the mechanical equipment in April. As near as I can tell, it's never been turned off. The county is not enforcing these items, they're just sending these out and just not doing anything about it. That's my only comment right now, because we're still waiting.
Thank you. So, perhaps, is there a representative from Verizon here that would like to make a presentation? Maybe address some of the concerns that were discussed?
Good morning. My name is Karen Leonard, and I'm representing Verizon Wireless. I sent a letter describing some of the background on this, but I'd like to just reiterate, Verizon purchased Golden State Cellular in early 2014. With, with that came 65 sites. So, the first thing we did is, is look at how we could start to offer LTE services to our customers. We went and we did a survey of all of our sites, so that we could figure out what we had, what modifications needed to be made, modify leases as necessary, do the required permitting. It was a lot to swallow, and so, that's a little bit of the background. We're very happy to be here. We're excited to offer LTE services to customers. Specifically to this site, I do feel like there's been some misrepresentations made about what was done. We, we did apply for a building permit on an existing 62-foot-tall tower. And I did want to clarify Darcy's comment about the 64 versus 62. I shouldn't read small plans without my glasses. The 64 was a reference to a pipe that was mounted on the pole when we purchased it, but the pole is 62 feet tall, and has been 62 feet tall. What happened 21 years ago, and from, from there to here, how it went from 50 to 62, I don't have any history on that. And, and that's why I think we've been accommodating, and I believe that's also why this slipped through not going to planning, because it was a one-for-one antenna change out on an existing structure. So, I want to be sure that it's clear that we didn't sneak in an additional 12 feet. We purchased a 62-foot-tall pole. We removed four antennas. We have three temporary up there right now in their place. And the reason we still have temporary equipment on the site is because of the stop work order. We added two cabinets. Other than that, everything else is original from what we purchased. From 1994, I can't speak to that, because that was 21 years ago when I was not here. But I did speak with the former general manager of Golden State Cellular, who was there in 1999. And he says, "Since 1999, that's been the height of that pole." So, he also doesn't know from '94. My best guess is, in '94, it was permitted at 50, and was installed at 62. I don't know. But where we are today is Verizon did not increase the height of the pole, Verizon did not remove equipment, we added two cabinets, and that's where we are today. So, following that, you know, we are trying to be good neighbors, because we are happy to be here. We did meet out at the property with Dan, and the site was clearly operating above the noise standards. It had been generating noise before, there was a question about that. It wasn't that it was silent and we came and made it generate noise. We added two cabinets. The combined cabinet noise was above the sound. So, that's when we went out the very next day and installed plywood to bring it into compliance. We felt like we worked good faith with, with the Hadleys to identify another location on the site. And, and that's what the application right now is for, us to move the equipment down there. We had talked about wood fencing. We'd also talked about concrete block structure. Ultimately, it was decided, right now, we have outdoor cabinets. So, in addition to the fans, you also hear the radios running. It's not a huge noise maker, but you do hear the radios. Ultimately, what we decided with the, with our sound engineer was, let's put in a prefabricated block shelter. So, the only thing that makes noise from that block shelter are the air conditioning units that are installed on the outside of that. So, along with that shelter that we are now purchasing, we would install the wood fence. It's buried down in, so there's already some sound barrier there. And then, we would, excuse me, install that sound curtain. So, that would meet the, the sound requirements. The, the facility does not run 24 hours a day. It has the ability to run 24 hours a day, but it's just when the fans would cycle on. So, it would be, I mean, it's, the equipment is always running, but the fans are not always running. So, just like your home, when the heat goes up, your conditioner cycles on. When it cools down, it cycles back off. With respect to the night work, the, we do night work only when we're doing a cutover that would affect customers.
A what?
A cutover that would affect customers. So, if we have to go out and take antennas down, replace new antennas, and shut the site down, we do like to do that work at night. We have no problem pre-arranging that. Regular maintenance is always done during the day, because that's when our technicians work on a regular basis.
Are you saying the night work is emergency work? Or night work is, is designed to do certain tasks when the system is at its lowest use?
Both.
So, interruption is minimalized?
Yeah, it would be both. I mean, if we have, if we have night work that needs to be done in an emergency situation because the site is down, we would go out at that time. If there is something that would be service affecting, we try and coordinate that. And, and again, you know, we have thousands of calls on this site daily. So, to, to talk about shutting it down, you know, we can do day work, but we prefer not to do it when it's going to be customer affecting. So, that's, that's when the night work is done. We have no problem coordinating that with the neighbors.
What is routine maintenance?
Routine maintenance, and typically, it would be once to two times a month. They come out and they check the radios, they make sure everything's running. And that's all, that's all on the ground, and that's all done during the day.
What did you mean by radio noise?
The radios themselves actually, like a computer. So, a computer, when it's thinking, it runs, and it makes a bit of noise. So, these are multiple computers. So, you would hear those.
Hum?
Kind of a hum. So, with the cabinets, there's the hum as well as the fans. By putting it into the shelter, we're eliminating that hum noise, and, and then you're only dealing with the cooling system.
Okay, now, you're hooked up to the grid, right? Your power is the grid.
Correct.
Do you have some kind of emergency generator that pops on when the grid goes down?
We do not have a generator on this site.
Okay.
Now, we do have battery backup, but that's limited.
Battery backup.
That's limited, so if there were, you know, a major disaster in the area. That's limited, so if there were, you know, a, a major disaster in the area, this site eventually would go down if the power were down, because the batteries will only last so long. So the other point I wanted to make, you know, in talking with the homeowners association, we, we've been, you know, shared with them that we're happy to clear the lot, and when we get back out there, that is one of the things that will be done, is existing brush. And again, you know, we've only owned this for a year and a half. We've been in this process for a year on it, so we're just trying to get it cleaned up. And again, I know, from 1994 to 2015, somewhere, something fell through the cracks. I wasn't here, I know Darcy wasn't here, and I, I know the Hadleys also weren't here, so we're just trying to clean it up at this point.
Happy to see I wasn't here either.
So I have a question. How often would, I mean, what is your typical nighttime maintenance at your other facilities? I mean, is it twice a year, once a month, every quarter? I mean, what, what's that look like?
The challenge is, it's probably not more than once or twice a year. The challenge is, is I wouldn't want to say, okay, we can do it in June and we can do it in December-
Right, no, I understand.
-because it's, it's just based on new technology coming out. And so when they come out and they say, hey, guess what? We have an antenna now that will allow you to, I don't know what else they can come up with-
Right, right.
-that they're going to do.
Right.
But it's, it's changing all the time. So, so a project, you know, when we get a new project like that, it typically takes us a good six months to arrange that. So right now, you know, there's nothing else planned for that, other than getting the permanent facility up and running.
Right, right. But it's not like, oh yeah, usually in our facilities, we have nighttime work during low customer use, you know, twice a week, or once a quarter, or-
I would say, at the most, maybe twice a year.
Okay, thank you.
The Hadleys spoke about doing a block wall versus the wood wall with the curtains. Have you guys looked into that and the cost difference, if that's what would make the neighbors happy?
Well, the block wall, when we talked with the Hadleys about the block wall, that was the block wall with the radio cabinets. So, so we believe we've accomplished the block wall by adding the shelter, the additional shelter. And, so rather than take the cabinets that, that are there now and moving those down, we, we took the shelter, we're going to purchase a new shelter to install there. So all of that radio noise will be covered in sound by that shelter.
And what will that bring the decibel rating down to?
48 at the property line.
And what would a block wall do?
According to our acoustical engineer, that wouldn't bring it down. That the wood fence and the sound curtain are as effective as a block wall.
So what would it take to bring it down to 20 or 30?
They've told me it cannot be done. Now, and the other item, you know, Verizon actually owns this piece of property. As a property owner, I, I think it's important to note that we have the rights on our property to generate noise, just as anyone else can run their air conditioning unit. I mean, it's really what we are talking about, our air conditioning units. So I, I think it's, to, to ask us to try and go lower than any other neighbor doesn't seem appropriate.
So the radio noise is pretty well taken care of by the block wall, is that the idea?
Correct. So the only time there would be noise on this site is when the, the air conditioning units are actually running.
And do those run 24/7, or?
Well, the site runs 24/7.
But the AC units, do they go 24 hours a day?
They kick on and they kick off. I mean, they're set to run 24 hours a day, they're, the cooling system is available-
Just like at your house.
Correct.
You've got it set at 66, when it gets to 67, it kicks on, gets back to 66, that kind of thing.
Okay, so then, in the, in the, in the nighttime, how often would those kick on typically? Say in the summer in Copperopolis?
Well, that's difficult to say. I actually spoke to our technicians about that specifically. You know, it's not just, they would run less at night, they would run less in the winter, because it's cooler. They will still run, because the radios do generate their own heat. So it's not like your house, where it's like, the air conditioner's never going to come on in the winter, because it's freezing. They, they do, they are a heat source, so they will cycle on and off. It's, it's difficult to say how often that is. And they also will gener- they will cycle on less at night, because less people will be using the system. So as, you know, as we have callers, the radios turn on, they're, they're operating, then we need to cool it back down. So at 2:00 in the morning, if no one's on our system, the operators, the, the radios are sitting silent.
Is there anything that you could do to bring the, the noise level down below 48, say to 40 or 35? Because this has been pointed out, every increase of one decibel amounts to twice the noise is perceived.
Yeah, I, from what I've been told in working with the acoustical engineer, we've really done what we can do to bring it down.
Can I pick up on, on that point, Mr. Rooster? The, the area that you're cooling is, is how big? What, what space is that?
Typically, and I'd have to reference the plans to see exactly what we're doing, typically, our shelters are between 200 square feet and 300 and 50 square feet.
Okay, so it's a, it's a single, it's a little bit bigger than a single car garage?
It's like a small trailer.
Okay. And then you, the HVAC unit sits outside of that like it would any other structure?
Yeah, they're prefabricated shelters, and they have two HVAC units mounted on the outside.
On the side?
Uh-huh.
Okay. There's two units in, because they're backups, or?
As far as I know, they're backups. I don't know if they would both run, or if they're just one, one backs up the other.
Okay, so these units are off-the-shelf kind of HVAC, like a homeowner would, would, would possess?
I, I mean, they're commercial units, so they're heavier duty, but, but yeah, it's a, it's an air conditioning unit.
Okay, so it's a relatively small volume of space that you're cooling, but there's a lot of heat generated in it, like somebody had a stove on all the time?
Correct.
Okay, so do they, if you know, do they cycle on and off more or less the same way, at, at the same rate that a typical house would? Or, or when it's 100 degrees outside, are they on all the time? Well, in my house, they're on, it's on all the time at 100 degrees, but-
Well, I mean, the, the building itself is a concrete block building, so I would imagine, now, this is, this is my mind's not, not a fact, that it would retain the cooling better than your home. You know, you walk into, like, the caves in Murphy's are cold all the time. So, so it probably is more efficient and stays cooler when it cools down in the summer. But it's probably also less affected when it's cold outside by the changes in the outdoor temperature.
Okay. Lastly, you're talking about a, a fence with a curtain versus a stone wall?
Correct.
Cinder block wall. Okay, around the entire facility, right?
On three sides.
On three sides. Okay. Has it been looked into the possibility of a sound curtain just around the HVAC units, instead of trying to block sound from some distance away from them? Is, are there sound attenuating kits you can buy for these things, and just stick it right around the unit and, and dampen the sound at the source?
You know, I, I don't have a straight answer for that, but I do know that they have to have ventilation, you know, so you couldn't-
Sure, I understand, I understand they have to have air. But, I mean, the closer you get to the sound source, the easier it is to knock, knock the sound down.
Correct, correct.
Does, does anybody, do you know what I'm talking about? Peter has a comment on that?
Well, no, I think that in general context, you're, you're correct. I think we need to hear from an acoustical consultant to know, you know, are there other methods that could further reduce? Is 48 the absolute minimum that it could be? Are there other techniques could be used to, that could be installed in addition to the fence or a wall and the sound curtain that would further reduce it? I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Now, we would not be opposed to a condition, you know, to, to the consultant that we hired, he's taking sound, taking readings out there, you know, he's the one who came up with the design. We would not be opposed to a condition that says, you know, if there's something else we can do, and, and, you know, presenting something to the, the planning director, you know, for review prior to installation.
That sounds good to me. I like that idea. I mean, I don't know why, I'm no sound engineer, but it just seems to make sense that there would be-
And, and the funny thing is, I, I'm with you, because I'm also not a sound engineer, and, and I say, well, why can't we do better? And they don't care, and this is what we got.
Okay.
But I'm happy to go back to them and, and have that prepared, and, you know, if there's something else we can do specifically around those HVAC units, you know, we, we really are trying to be accommodating here.
And I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate that with respect to the county codes, you're, you're in there, you're in the box. But if, if for relatively little effort, you can really knock it down, that seems like a pretty good practice to take as a good neighbor. And I have a question for, for Peter with respect to the noise ordinance that we just passed. Is there anything in there that this runs afoul of?
The, the noise element, the draft element of the general plan-
Our draft version, yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, with, with respect to, if, if, is it possible then to fold into our agreement? Your name again?
Karen.
What Karen has just suggested Verizon wouldn't, wouldn't be opposed to. Is it possible to, to add that to, as a condition?
The only concern I have is sort of an open-ended condition. What if, after working with a consultant, there is no way? What, 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 how do you satisfy that condition? How can you, you know, guarantee, yes, they've met that requirement? When it's sort of an open-ended-
Yeah.
It would be better to do that before it's approved, and know what that standard is. If they, we come back with a study that says we can reduce it down to 37, you know, great, okay, that's as far as you can go without, you know, you know.
How, how long would it take you to have an acoustical expert come up with some alternatives or assures that there aren't any? To bring this down to, you know, name your level, 35, 30, how, how low can you go for, at what cost?
It's, it's not a problem to get that work done. You know, what we have is the report that they provided, saying this, this is what we can do. I, I don't mind going back to them and asking them to take a second stab at it. But I just, I would like to point out, we have an ability to stay within the noise ordinance remaining where we are right now, by installing permanent, permanent sound barriers. And what we're ultimately delaying is what the neighbors had asked us to do, is to relocate the equipment. So I do want to just make that point. We're, we're not opposed to that, we can go back and take a look at it again.
In my version of, of this, there would be no, it would not affect your location, it would not affect the big-ticket issues. It would only be, is there a kit out there-
Right.
-that maybe even the HVAC people themselves make? And they say, here's, here's something you could add to our equipment-
Right.
-that knocks the sound down, and it's, you order it on Amazon.
Right. And, and, well, that, I know there's not.
Okay, well, that might have been an exaggeration.
Because I have Prime, I'll do that right now, if we could do it, but-
From the manufacturer, possibly, or-
Yeah.
An aftermarket kind of-
No, there isn't, there isn't something like that. That I know. There's not just a kit to slap on there, and, I mean, it would be designing something from the acoustical engineer, some additional sound curtain, something like that. But it's, it's not as simple as the, the shelter manufacturer has a kit that they would provide.
That is installed proximally to the HVAC unit.
Correct.
Something that the sound engineer would know, probably from his understanding of the industry.
Correct. I mean, and so they may be able to design something, but from what I understood from the report he gave us, is this is, this is what we were able to do.
Okay. But it, it's possible that the sound engineer was just looking at what the requirements are, as opposed to what you can really do?
Yeah. And, and I'm not opposed to taking that back to them and saying, hey, can we do a little better?
With respect to the CCNRs and the Argus Catcher Review Board and that issue, would, would Verizon, as an, as an owner of this property, be required to submit whatever they're doing to this board and get approval?
You know, we actually did submit to the board after the November, so, so in the initial, and again, I, one of the reasons that we've worked, I think, to be accommodating, especially accommodating here, because this is a significant expense, what we're doing, moving this equipment down the hill. You know, we're all human too. 65 sites, you know, what do we need to do? Hey, this is a one-for-one antenna changeout. You know, we worked with the county, we obtained a building permit. I mean, we, we did what we believed and thought we needed to do. When this came up, and Mr. Hadley had raised the issue with the HOA, I did approach the HOA. They, they do have the drawings that were submitted. I actually had been working with Jean Everett pretty regularly, and then, I guess, things kind of fell apart. So I, I was not asked to attend the meeting, or was not aware of the meeting, where the board made the decision to deny this and to appeal the project. So we, we have, so, and I, I mention that, because when I read the appeal, it sounded a bit like we had not ever approached them. We had, and we had been working with them. So I believe that comment was back to the 1994. Unfortunately, again, I can't address what happened between now and then, but that, we have been working with the HOA, we spoke about removing the debris on the site, and agreed to it. So, so yes, we do work with, with HOAs, we're, we're a property owner there, just like anybody else, just like the Hadleys are.
Any other questions? Thank you, we may have more later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a, raise a hands of people that want to speak on this issue?
I'll just say-
Yeah, no, no, just hold on one second. Okay, so just a couple of you, all right? So I, now we'll have public comment on this, and I'm going to limit you to five minutes maximum per person.
Good morning, Board. Dennis Mills. And what I wanted to do is just kind of give you some of my background, so that you know where I'm coming from. I was one of the trainers facilitators for the energy efficiency programs for Pacific Gas and Electric called CheckMe. And I want to just be sure that you understand that various manufacturers have different requirements for decibel levels, but all of them are taken at the unit itself, or within a foot of the unit. Due to the newer technology, especially with scroll compressors, high-efficiency standards for sound, even the residences now are requiring lower decibel levels at their home. They don't want that big package sitting outside their bedroom window, making a lot of noise. With that being said, you can go between the various manufacturers and see as much as a 10 decibel difference between manufacturers. So you could be as high as 77, 78, or even 79 decibels at the unit with some, and you could be as low as 69 or 68, with, for instance, a Lennox XC series package unit that will do the same job, and be more efficient in doing it. Our newer air conditioning systems now are capable of, of operating as close to what your old 1980s refrigerator did in your house, and be able to cool an entire area. So the efficiency rating is, it determines how often it runs, and, and how long that cycle occurs, but also can help with these newer designs in providing a substantially lower decibel rating. So if the unit is, say, 15 years or 20 years old or older, it definitely is not within the realm of, of these decibel ratings. So that might be something to help mitigate, if there's some concerns about it, what those decibel ratings are at the site. So, hope that helps.
Could you stick around for a second?
Certainly.
Can I? CCWDD operates this other tower site there, right?
Yes.
Is there maintenance work that's done there too?
Of course.
Day and night?
Whenever it's needed. I can't speak for when it occurs.
Is it, is there a regular maintenance schedule, plus the emergency type stuff? Would that be normal for a site like that?
It would be as needed. Yeah. I mean, I can't speak what the staff does, or whatever, just to explain, I'm one of the directors for CCWDD, so, thank you. Questions?
Yeah, do you have generators on this? Do you have backup power?
I'm not certain if there is at the tank site or not, but yes, we have generators located to route our facilities, to be sure that we have the backup necessary. So anywhere where we potentially could lose power, and it would create an interruption of service, we obviously have generators located there. And by the way, they're mostly quiet-run as well.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, you may. So if we're done with that, we'll, we'll go back to the appellate, and then we'll-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I have to honestly say, I'm from the tank site, or whatever, but we have no problem with the tank site. If they're running any kind of tower equipment, we surely don't hear it. Occasionally, you hear a clunk, but generally, they're a quiet neighbor, so, for what that's worth. I think it's important to note that although Karen says she's a neighbor, she's not, she doesn't live there. If she lived there, she'd understand that there's a- there's a difference between being a neighbor that lives there and one that does not. And people sleep in the house. So I guess what they're, what they're asking for is a commercial property, a commercial development within a residential neighborhood. And that's what separates it. That's why I'm asking for the lower noise level. They may say, well, we just can't go there with it. Okay, well, set a level that you think is appropriate. If your studies say a quiet rural neighborhood is 20 decibels, set it at 25 and say, try to bring us a plan that's 25 decibels. Do your best. See what you can do. I mean, that's a rational way to go about it. Those fans, as far as the fans go, I have never heard them not run. If one's on, the other one might be off. If the other one's on, the other one might be off. I understand the humming will go away, but I've never been to that site day or night, winter or summer, when the fans aren't running. Never have the fans not been running. And the fans are what make the noise and the fans are what they put on the exterior of the shelter. Put the fans inside the shelter, we have no problem, but that's not going to serve their purpose because that won't help cool it. I know it's possible, if you set a limit for them in the 20 to 30 range, even if you go 10 decibels, which is a doubling of the ambient noise level, I know there's a way to get it there engineering-wise without a huge expense. Or move it farther away from all three neighbors. Move it even farther down the hill. So I guess I'll leave it at that. It's obviously noise.
Do you have an air conditioning unit at your house?
I do.
What are the decibels on that?
Probably about equivalent to their tower. And it runs...
I'm sorry, equivalent to what?
Probably about equivalent to their tower. In all fairness, it's probably 45 decibels, I'm going to guess.
Okay.
And it runs maybe 60 hours a year, which I'm fine with. If they want to have it run like a normal air conditioner on a normal house, I have no problem with that. My air conditioner is off. It has been for a month. It won't be back on until July. And yes, it'll run from July in the evenings until September, three months out of the year.
Okay.
It will. But you expect that. When you hear your neighbor's AC on, if you don't have AC, you're jealous of them. And it's kind of an expected thing, but having that AC run 24/7, 365 is a completely different thing.
So one of the things that you said was if we could put some special restriction on that decibel level.
That's what I'm asking.
The problem that we have with doing that is that we have to follow our county codes. And we can't selectively enforce, at least in my mind, we can't selectively enforce who's going to be at what level. That puts us in a pretty precarious situation up here. So it's not that we're not sympathetic, but I just want you to understand that we can't pick and choose how we're going to apply the laws. And so...
A rational approach because it's a condition of approval.
I think mitigation is probably something that they can be neighborly with is kind of my thoughts. Trying to bring it down through structure around it.
Oh, absolutely. I think it's very doable. I have them next to my office. They're in exterior, they're in exterior, they're not in a building. Their exterior runs and they run at 35 decibels. I can get them the manufacturer if they need that. And that's an exterior thing. And you don't need to generalize or you don't need to be specific to a site. You can say, do an ambient measurement of that neighborhood for a period of two weeks with the equipment off or in an area where it's calm. I mean, it's not fair to do it in the middle of a storm because obviously it generates noise. Take that level and say, listen, we'll go five, five decibels above it. And that's, that, so you're not a specific level. We're just asking it not be 48. That's very, very loud.
Mr. Hadley, what, because murder these are sayings that we can't set different levels for different commercial industrial sites. We can't pick one that we like for a particular site, for a particular applicant and say, this would be better in this situation.
Isn't that considered a condition of approval? You can make it a condition of approval, as they did with the not working at night.
Well, the condition of approval is that they meet, is that they meet standards that we set ahead of time, not, that it's not something that we, they go into blindly and hope that we don't come up with some unrealistic level.
Well, that's why we're in one of these meetings, so we don't come up with an unrealistic level.
May I, sir? Maybe I could address that issue. I think that typically when we have a ministerial type of permit, the standards that we set as minimums, you know, if you meet those, you issue the permit. In this situation, we have a discretionary permit. And I think that we do have the ability to impose a greater standard in order to make the findings necessary to approve a use permit, which is basically that the use is compatible with the neighborhood. So in this case, I think you could, if you felt it was appropriate, to impose a standard or some condition that is over and above the minimum requirement.
Okay. Now, we would have to impose a, we would have to determine a standard, but we wouldn't have the information to go by. For example, if we first had information from sound engineer that says, okay, I was looking at the standard, but here's what's possible, then we would have something to go by. We could say, okay, if that's possible and it's, you know, a reasonable cost, we could set that standard. But sitting here today, not knowing what's possible, reasonably possible, we, how could we come up with a number?
I would agree with that, yes. It certainly would be helpful to know, you know, the range of possibilities.
Okay. Option would be for us to say, we would like more information on what's possible and at what cost to determine whether or not we would impose a different level on the applicant.
Yes, I agree with that.
And the applicant, in those kinds of situations, the applicant would, we would probably name, we would probably specify, we would like for you to use this sound engineer to give us an opinion.
We wouldn't typically say you have to use a specific engineer. Well, I think if that's the direction you would like to go, I would say, here's the range we would like you to shoot for. Provide us something that meets, can you meet that range and what would be the ramifications of that? Does it mean, you know, burying it in the ground? Does it mean raising the height of the fence? I mean, there's all different kinds of ways that you could reduce the noise. What's the cost? I don't know. You know, does it make the project infeasible? You know, those are the kind of considerations you would need to have, but we don't have that information before us now. What was submitted to us was this analysis that says, we have met the standard based on, with these mitigation measures. If you feel that it would be appropriate to reduce that to something even lower because of, you know, this is a special request. It's an administrative use permit. It's discretionary. And the findings that we need to make for approval of a use permit are, you know, they're in the document here, but one of them is that, you know, that the use is found to be compatible with the surrounding uses, something to that effect. And if you feel that in order to make that finding, the noise level needs to be below the minimum standard because it runs for a longer period of time, whatever rationale you have to, in order to impose that, then you have the right to do that.
Okay, but can, before we come up with a number, we could at least be informed by a study, a qualified study as to what the possibilities are. That's my point, is that we can't come up with a number right now. We can't, we can't give you, we want you to bring it down to 30, 35, 40. We can't do that. We just, we, for me, I would be wanting to know what the possibilities are based upon a professional's evaluation. And then...
And I think that's within your purview to ask for that.
And then we could write, then we could make the requirement based upon that.
I think it would be helpful...
Or we could decide it's impractical and throw it out.
I think it'd be helpful to have a target that you're looking for.
Say again?
I think it'd be helpful to have a target so that the applicant knows what they're looking for. Is it 20? Is it 30? Is it 40? You know, if, that I think would be something that would be useful for the acoustical engineer to sort of know, okay, what parameter, you know, are we looking at, rather than the full range of every potential, you know...
Fair enough.
Yeah.
But where are you going to gauge that from? From down the hill where they're going to move the equipment? Or are you going to do it from where it stands to the property?
Property line still say proper?
Property line is where our standard is. I think that makes sense. But, you know, if one of the methods is to move it further away, that's going to reduce the noise. Maybe one decibel, maybe two, I don't, I don't know. Are there other mitigating factors that could be added to the project? Additional noise barriers with that? Again, those are the kinds of things that, that I think what was asked for by the applicant to the consultant was, find us a way to meet the standard. That was done.
Yep.
You're now saying, we would like to see if there's other means to reduce the noise. And if so, how far down can we go? One thing I'd like to point out, as we're sort of on this subject, is the list that was provided in the appeal letter refers, you know, the 20-decibel is quiet rural, quiet rural nighttime. 30-decibel level is quiet suburban nighttime. I think one thing you might consider is just rural or suburban. We're in R1 zone. I don't know what the size lots are. They're probably, what, third to half an acre? I would consider this more of a suburban neighborhood than a rural area.
Agreed.
But, you know, so maybe 30 is the appropriate target. Again, these are not adopted standards by the county.
Correct.
These are typical noise levels around the country.
Okay. So if that was the desire of this commission, how do we craft a resolution to that effect?
I would recommend at this point that it be continued rather than try to take action today. Continue it, bring it back after that noise analysis is done, rather than try to craft as a condition because we won't know what the standard is, which to shoot for.
Okay, but we need, we need to give them a target? Realistically, we should give them a target? Or we just want to see the analysis?
I think that if there's a target that you guys can settle on, that you feel comfortable with, that that would be appropriate action to take.
Well, and if that were the case, if you're going to set a target, and let's say that the acoustical analysis was completed and it was at or below that target, would it really have to come back to us?
Well, if you wanted to just arbitrarily say, if you can get down to 35 decibels, we're okay with it, we could craft a condition and say, that's okay. And we could approve it subject to some middle of...
Splicing it into this.
Yes.
So I'd like to hear from Ms. Leonard again, maybe about this discussion. And thank you very much.
I would, I would argue slightly that I don't consider it suburban there.
Okay.
I mean, somewhere in there suburban to that 20 to 30, I think that's the range we're talking about, in all fairness.
All right. Thank you.
Does that what my readings say?
So you kind of know where there's some discussion around this. Maybe you could weigh in on, you know, continuing, setting a target?
I mean, if, obviously, we would prefer to get this done and not come back. So I don't know that 35 will be achievable. I mean, if that's the number that, that is determined, I would prefer that it be conditioned that if we can do that, we don't come back. And if we can't, then we do come back at that point. And again, I just want to clarify, Verizon is spending a substantial amount of money to make this move. And we are meeting the ordinance requirements where we stand today with a valid building permit. So at some point, I feel like the appellant is fighting against us moving the site, which is difficult because ultimately, if that's where we end up, then we'll build a permanent sound wall and stay where we are. So, I mean, we're prepared to take a run at it and see if we can do better. I can't promise you that we can. But our preference, obviously, would be if we can do it, that we not have to come back.
Right. So if we set a target and if you met it, then you just, you're not coming back and you just move forward?
That would be preferable.
Right, right. Okay.
Going back to what our administrative possibilities are here, if we were to splice in the condition, we picked a number and we spliced in the condition, if for some reason it can't be met, the sound engineer says, this is no way to do that without spending millions of dollars, then they're, then they're out of luck completely, correct?
Well, or they could come back with that, with that analysis.
They would have to come back and ask for that to be modified.
Right. And say, this is what we've tried every single thing we can do.
And then we just splice in a new number if there's, if there's a new number that they can meet, that we agreed to. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to make the process as short as possible, not, not kick this can down the road forever. So I think I would, I would conclude my remarks by saying, I would like to see us aim for a number, and I would just say, less than 40, under 40. And I think that's, that's what, a 15 or 20% reduction? That's close to, yeah, that would be about a 20% reduction.
Now, I would have a question then. So if that required, I don't know how they'll do it. So if that required us to switch from the shelter to the cabinets, would that be something then that we, we would not have to come back if we said, okay, we went to cabinets, but they had this other equipment? Because obviously, there's, there's different, you know, Mr. Hadley had mentioned a cabinet near his office that runs at 32, you know, maybe, maybe that's the solution, is they find cabinets over a shelter.
Here's how I think it works to answer your question, and Mr. Maurer can, can correct me. If we said, conditioned upon a decibel reading at the property line of less than 40, and your engineer said, here's what you can do to get down to 40. Use a different HVAC, as Mr. Mills suggested, or there's, there's some structure that you can put around it, whatever the...
Or outdoor cabinets would be an acceptable...
Then you come back and you say, then, then they've got a green light and they go. Is that correct?
I don't think it matters what methods they use, basically. It could be a living hedge.
No, anything.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that the commission then would be in agreement that, that outdoor cabinets would be an acceptable alternative. So we, we aren't reapplying and starting over again.
The professional gives them their alternatives. They say, okay, we can go with that. And if, if that's the case, then they're free to, or they come before us and they say, we've done it, we're there. Do they have to come before us?
Now...
If I would propose some language that says, additional noise attenuation measures shall be installed or implemented to achieve a decibel reading of less than 40 decibels at the property line, then however they accomplish that would satisfy what I believe you're trying to say. They would, then we would work with them to ensure this meets that standard and they would satisfy...
At that point, they just have to go to you, not to us.
Yes, that's correct.
It sounds as if though, the appellant though, is not happy because that would be considered a redesign, changing the cabinets out. So then you'd be looking at another, is that right?
May I speak, please? My concern is that that's just an arbitrary number.
Please come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
And introduce yourself again.
I'm Dan Hadley, sorry. My concern is that the 40 decibel is just an arbitrary number. What I'm asking for their site to do, and I'm not trying to get it removed, believe me, I'm not trying to do that. Because if somebody builds a house there, then it blocks part of my view and I'd prefer not to. So I'm actually supportive of them. I just don't want their actions to cause a quality of life problem with me. They have a permit currently for zero decibels. The current, as far as I can tell, the current neighborhood decibel level is somewhere in the 20s. And according to the Calvera study, it's somewhere in the 20s. All I'm asking is that they meet the neighborhood's sound levels at night so that we don't hear it 24/7. I'm not trying to get the site moved. I'm not trying to increase its bulk. I'm not arguing the fact that they're going from approved 43-foot pole to 63-foot pole. I just don't want to hear it day and night, including hearing them work on it, which it sounds like is a reasonable thing. So if, if you want to choose a number, I would ask that you have a noise study done for that area, maybe in three locations, not near roads, that establishes what that community level is. Or take the Calvera study of 20 decibels and say, this is what we're going to say, or 30 decibels is what we're going to go for. I think if we're in the 20 to 30 decibel range, then the applicant says, okay, we have a design standard we need to meet. And if they can meet that standard, great. If they can't, then they have to come back and see how close they can get to it. That's all it amounts to. They put the plywood up on that thing and it dropped it from 65 decibels to under 50 with a piece of plywood. So I know it can be done. We're not asking for anything unreasonable. I'm not asking for them to go to zero. I'm just asking not to hear it. Well, no, because there's, there's ambient level. I mean, stuff runs in here you don't really hear because it's quieter than us. But you hear us. And everything, like I said, in here, according to my decibel meter, everything in here, nothing has really exceeded 50 decibels yet. So this is in my backyard.
We try and keep it below 50 here.
Yeah, I understand. But 40, but if you take, if you take what it says of 20, and you take what the county maximum is of 50, somewhere in there, there's maybe a fair range. But the reality is, in my backyard, it's probably in the 20 to 30 range. I would love to see if they could come back with a proposal that's 20 to 30, or move it farther downhill, or dig it deeper into the hillside in order to meet that. You know, I'm trying to be as flexible as I can. As it turns out, the tower is actually 18 and a half feet off my property line, but I'm not even bringing that up right now because that's the whole I'm not even bringing that up right now, because that's a whole nother issue. I'm more interested in the sound, to be honest with you. That's a thought.
Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Leonard. When were the cooling units installed?
There, the cooling units, there were cooling units on the site. There were fans on the radios that were installed when Verizon purchased the site. So the date of when any equipment was changed out between 1994 and 2014, I don't know.
So this is equipment that was on-site when you purchased?
There was equipment on-site when we purchased it.
And this is the same equipment we're dealing with now?
Well, no, we did add two cabinets.
Okay.
So we added one, we had an electrical cabinet, and then we added a cabinet that controls the remote radio units that are on the tower.
Okay.
So it's the combined cabinet noise. So it's not that there weren't noise generators, it's just with new noise generators, that's what put it over the top.
So what was the noise level before you added those cabinets?
You know, that's an interesting question. I mean, we, we probably could evaluate that by shutting the, the two new cabinets off, powering those off, and then taking a reading to see-
How much has the noise level changed, would be my question. I mean, it was, the noise was there before.
It was, it was above 20, I, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
Because we, like I said, we added a power cabinet, and we added one cabinet to control units that are on the tower.
Okay.
What I'm trying to get at is, the, whatever's causing the noise to be at 48.
Correct.
When was, when was that purchased? When was it installed? Was there a decision made to purchase units that cost less but were more noisy?
No.
That kind of thing?
Um, you know, everything we do, like when we talk about the shelter, I know that the gentleman who spoke, and I didn't catch his name, who had mentioned using newer equipment rather than 15 to 20-year-old equipment. I mean, if we install a shelter on this site, we're purchasing a brand-new shelter. The cabinet, the cabinets that were installed on-site by Verizon is brand-new equipment. The cabinets that are there now, I, I can't speak to when those were installed or how old they are. But they, they do all make noise. It's just the combination of those together is what put it over the top.
So, do we have then an understanding of what the noise level was before?
No.
We don't have, we don't know?
No, we don't.
Without doing some switching off and, and then retesting?
Right, and we could do that. I mean, we could have the engineer go out there, switch the equipment off, and, and, I mean, I would probably be more inclined to say, let's put in a condition that says we maintain the noise level of the equipment that's been there for the last 20 years? That makes sense to me?
No, they're there.
That's, hello, you're just, you can address us, and if we will, thank you.
Yeah, and, and the equipment was not removed. The existing equipment is still there.
You just added.
We added two cabinets.
Right.
So we could shut those two cabinets off, and we could tell you what was running prior to.
Karen, do you happen to know, right off, whether the acoustic engineers that did the study, did any studies about deflecting the noise in a different direction? I mean, that's done with loud noises quite long ago.
Yeah, and they were, I mean, we were on-site with the acoustical engineer, with my construction manager, with the Hadleys. I mean, they, they really were working on, okay, where should we put this, that it's not going to just affect another neighbor? How do we, and that's why it was, it was recessed into the hill. So, I mean, they, they did a lot of work to get to where we are. So in answer to that question, yes, that is, you know, what we hired them to do. Can they make it better? I mean, I'm, I'm certainly willing to give it a shot, but I don't think 20 is reasonable.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We were just told by Mr. Hadley that you have a permit zero, permit level of zero, that you have a, use permit level of zero. Is that true?
From 1994, that's what the permit apparently was issued.
The permit says zero, or it just happened to be zero?
I don't have the permit. I don't know if it was the application, or if it was a condition of approval. I had understood that the application had stated that it would be zero at the time in 1994. I also would like to make one comment, if I can.
Please.
Are we past public comment? I know that there's been, been, you know, some talk of commercial use in a residential neighborhood. I mean, wireless phone service really has gotten to the point of a public utility use. People are giving up their home phones, they're relying on this service in their homes every day when we have emergencies. I mean, Verizon is one of the first to roll out the, the cell-on-wheels to provide first responders with phones. I mean, this really, this really isn't a luxury item anymore. It's something that people rely on. And unfortunately, the only way we can cover residential areas is to be in residential areas. So I did just want to make that clarification.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Should I sit down?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Dan has put, oh, Jane Everett.
And Dan has, has expressed everything. I, thank you very much for how cooperative you have been. My question too, when you're doing all of this, could you take into consideration that Verizon now owns this lot? In the future, I do not see a one-acre lot sitting there with just what we're doing today and an antenna. So when we're talking sound barrier, if Verizon wants to extend, add, change, where are we going with the noise level then? Does the noise level depend later on on whether we now are no longer a rural area, and we become a suburban area? I would like you guys to take that into consideration if you're going to make a specific, you were talking about putting in a, adding something into it, or making it a stipulation or something with the sound. You were, Peter had said something about sound, with the sound thing. You would like to get it down, and if they can't get it down, we, you know, do something else. But could you take that into consideration also, that this is a one-acre lot with the way Verizon stands today? And I really don't see that lot staying as it is. So should that lot change? Do we go back to the drawing board again? Or where are we with the noise level also, for those people that will live on that street and in that area? Is that, is that a valuable, or a valid question to ask?
Any additional towers or equipment would require a new administrative use permit? So if some other carrier wanted to go on that site, they'd have to apply for their own permit.
But if we're asking for the noise level to go down to where it is today, Karen is probably right. That would not be obtainable with a new, possibly, you know, situation. So when you guys are making your decision, where does that, I mean, for association and for us in a rural area, do we change as to where we are? Or what happens should they decide to utilize that land some more? Now, what do we do? And do we get notified? Karen's right. I did not approve that, and I let it ride till it went to the board, our board. So it's not been approved by us as far as the sound. I don't, is that a valid question? You're all looking at me like I'm crazy.
In the, no, in the future, if they wanted to do any expansions, they would have to reapply for permits for the county, that's what Peter was trying to tell you.
Yeah.
And it would be looked at all over again. It would, it would not just be, okay, here, go. It, it would either, they'd have to meet the same criterias, and it would have to go through the permit process again.
So if we're still a rural, you know, and you decide on 30, then they would have to stay within the 30 limit, I guess. Is that right?
I think it would be on the individual applications. That would be for Peter to answer. It would still be, the, the noise would still be at the property line. The property line's not going to change. So whether you had 10 towers or one tower, that would be my assumption.
And if the standard was, if, whatever the standard that's established by the commission, you know, that would be the same standard, I certainly would apply to any new application.
Future.
So cumulatively, we'd have to meet that. But again, that would be subject to whatever review process a new proposal would be.
And would that come to our association, that they're applying, hopefully?
Well, we distributed the application twice to the association. We received no comments back, but we do not enforce CCNRs.
Right.
It's between the homeowner association and the property owners to enforce their CCNRs. That is not the county's responsibility.
But you would work with us on the sound, as you're doing today, which is greatly appreciated.
Sure. Will you come to the hearing and make testimony? Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh-huh, thank you.
My name's Bonnie Newman. I'm from Double Springs, and I think in real simple ways. And I'm listening to the lady saying that a wooden fence and a acoustical curtain is just as protective as a, a double wa, I mean, a cinder block wall, that it admits, allows the same amount of, of noise through. And yet, when you look at the way freeways are constructed, they put up cinder block walls. So my simple suggestion would be to build a cinder block wall, seven or eight feet high, with an acoustical curtain. And I think that would definitely block out all kinds of noise, maybe cut it in half. If the acoustical curtain suffices with the difference between a wooden wall and a cinder block wall, introduce that acoustical curtain with the cinder block wall, because I, I live in neighborhoods where, if you live behind a wooden fence, you hear everything going on. But if there's a cinder block wall, you can't really spy on your neighbors and hear what's going on. That would be my very simple suggestion. Make it taller, make it thicker, and maybe it won't be disruptive to the rest of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I'm Mr. Race from Genelin. I presume that the homeowners association is a state-recognized corporation, and they do have their CCNR and DRC, so they have a state standing also, and they do have their own legal firms, I presume, also. So they can do litigations on their own, but that can't is approval. If they have a legal beef, that's one thing, but that getting your folks involved first. They have a legal standing in the state of California as a corporation. Nonprofit mutual benefit corporation, homeowners association, that's one thing. The other thing is that that can be compromised made over here. If you start approving eight, nine-foot-high cinder block walls, I think this gentleman would go nuts over there, because he likes the view, and I don't blame him. But the other point is that there could be compromise for a hell of a lot cheaper and more efficiently. Hey, how about suggesting a couple of solar panels? So during the summertime, they won't make as much noise, let the residents make the noise, and it could be a compromise. And then you could use just the standby generators, just like CCWD, but solar panels could do the, enough solar panels up there silently generate.
Power generation was not the issue. There's no power generation.
The noise.
It's the fans.
No, it's, it's the HVAC unit, not the, there's no power generation outside.
Fine, but the power generation makes the noise, that's upset the people. But if you have a silent power generation, no noise.
There's no power generation.
But air conditioning, that takes generation. Okay, that's my point. If that air conditioning unit will run from, not generating noise, but just AC, that would reduce the noise and start with, wouldn't it?
A solar panel's not going to change the noise that an HVAC unit makes.
Is there an electric motor in there?
Yeah, electric motor, compressor.
Right. But if that would, is, a solar panel could reduce the amount, there's no generator in there?
No, the solar panel just makes electricity to run the same motor and the same HVAC unit as before.
Maybe we could say, it doesn't matter generation, whatever. Mr. Race, please go ahead with your comments.
Okay, no, the whole point is that they have ours other than the county, you're in between, and I'm sure Verizon is somewhat regulated by the feds also, communication. So there's a lot of options they have, and I'm sure they have outstanding attorneys in a DRC and a CCRC. That's what they do, so they can utilize it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just briefly.
And this will be your last opportunity for comment.
That's fine. There's no problem with that. I understand, because I've been in the other side of these meetings while I wait. You asked about what the CUP approval was in 1994. The findings for the CUP 1994-29, on August 18th, 1994, state condition number five, findings for the approval. The proposed use is compatible with neighboring land use and zoning. Evidence, the telecommunication tower consists of a utility pole, four mounted antenna, and one transmitter, and will be approximately 43 feet high. CCWD currently maintains and operates a transmission tower on the adjacent parcel. And then it gives an APN number. The proposed project shall not create any noise, odor, smoke, dust, pollution, or additional traffic, and the surrounding land uses and zoning are undeveloped, single-family residential. That's what's currently approved, and it very specifically states, this condition of approval now shall not create any noise. So I'll still stand by my ambient sound level if they want to improve the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lou Mayhew. I, I think the homeowners have a good case. I think the county has a bit of culpability in this, because it did not go through the planning department. It seems to me that you need to use an objective standard regarding the noise. It would be inappropriate simply to say, less than 40, 35, whatever. I think it would, it's, it's a fair thing to do, to require Verizon to say, what's possible and at what cost? How low can we get this? It could be that there are levels where certain structures for 20 decibels, it's not a good trade-off, or at 25, it's possible. And the kind of structure or building that would be involved is acceptable. So it, it seems to me, at this point, it makes most sense to do a continuance with the charge to Verizon to have an objective look at how low can we go, or what are the options within from 20 to, to 40. But don't just pick something out of the air. Noise, unless it's close to you or your home, I don't think you can translate decibel numbers to the impact on people. So I, I think you need objective standards and the admonition to try and do the best you can, what's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Madam Chair and the Board. I just can't believe a company as big as, I'm sorry, Arthur Ramirez, I cannot believe that a company as big as Verizon doesn't have people that can figure out a sound device that would limit the noise to almost nothing. I, I just can't understand that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for deliberation.
Can I ask a couple more questions of Karen Leonard?
Sure. Karen, could you come back up?
Getting my exercise.
Okay, looking at the Ballard Acoustical Consultants' report that you supplied us with, if I'm getting this right, you, you dropped the 48 decibels with just the one-inch plywood installed, correct?
Correct, where we stand now.
Okay, and that's, and you haven't moved the, the facility yet?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, when you move the facility, and you, and you install the acoustical curtain, and apparently you're going to have the cooling fans facing away from the nearest residences? Anything else that's going to be different?
Um, no.
Okay. What will the, what will the decibel level be when you do those things?
It's in the report. It's, it's, I believe it was at 48.
Well, it's at 48 with just the plywood.
Right, and the plywood is a temporary measure. You know, in hearing everything today, I'm, I'm thinking maybe a better alternative is for us to look at a, a more permanent solution at the existing location and see how low we can bring it down there, because it, it does seem that moving it down the hill, maybe the sound is carrying up.
Say again, please.
So I think what you're proposing maybe is take, is to, to relook at, at, at measures at your existing location.
Removing the- Removing the plywood, seeing what they can do for a permanent enclosure there.
Right.
And see if we can, how we can bring it down there, is that would be something I would have them look at as well.
Right. So, I don't know, in looking, I mean, maybe this is more in line of, you know, continuation to allow you to do that, rather than just setting a target today, to a date certain and give you time to?
Yeah, because it may be that, keeping the-
And that might be more cost-effective for you, too.
Keeping the equipment where it is, we may be able to spend more money on-
Right.
-sound measures, because this really is pretty significant expenditure with what they're doing now. So that may be a better alternative, to keep it where it is.
My other question was, in your letter, you do point out that the engineer, the acoustical engineer, determined that doing a wooden fence with the acoustical curtain would lower the sound at the property line more than a concrete block, but I wasn't able to find that in the report.
That was actually a conversation that I had with him, when the concrete block came up.
I mean, I have to tell you, that doesn't make intuitive sense to me. I would think concrete blocks would stop noise more than a wooden fence and whatever this acoustical curtain-
Well, it's not just the fence, it's actually that, you know, it's not a curtain like you have in your home. I mean, it's a product that's specially installed to cut down the noise. So, I'm not an acoustical engineer, so I know it, I go off what they tell me.
Okay. So, thank you very much. Did you have any more? Thank you, Karen. So, it sounds like a continuance may be the way to go, to provide some additional information and options for Verizon to reduce the sound levels?
I'm in agreement, because it doesn't look like our picking of a target number is going to make anybody happy either.
I don't think so either, and I think it's there that there's enough information now that they're really going to want to look at some other alternatives other than the ones that they're looking at today, so, as far as mitigating the sound. And that would allow them to do that.
Okay, so what's the direction that we give them, the applicant then?
Well, I think-
We just push them off with, they have the understanding, come back to us with what?
They're sort of the best, the best that they can do, basically, you know, whatever that might look like, whether it's moving the existing equipment, you know, adding new mitigation measures, you know, to the, to the existing site. With the understanding that we're looking for something that's more compatible with the neighborhood in terms of sound.
I'm not comfortable just picking a number.
Okay, so is there-
I think we should continue it.
All right, so is there a motion to continue this item?
I'll make the motion to continue.
Madam Chair, could I suggest a date?
Yes, absolutely, thank you, Dr.
I would suggest that due to the holidays and the potential that it's a little more work that they might have to do, because they may need to revise the site plan and resubmit to us, if they're going to keep it at the current location, that it should be no sooner that it comes back to you. And I'm suggesting January 28th. It might seem far off, but I think with the work, and I'm just anticipating, if we're going to have to look at a new site plan, we're going to need some time.
Do we have to pick a date?
If we don't pick a date, we have to renotice, and that's an additional cost.
If we pick a date, and Verizon comes to you and says, we're ready, in advance of, you know, we're ready now, and it's-
We would have to renotice.
Right.
It's more cost-effective for the county to continue to a date specific.
Okay.
So, January 28th, it's my recommendation to get-
February.
January.
January 28th.
Just to get through the process.
Right.
So our next available meeting is going to be the 14th, so that's just two meetings away.
Right.
I'm good with that.
Is that okay with Verizon?
We've gotten a nod, yes.
We're getting a nod from Verizon.
Yes, yes. So, is there a motion to continue this, to the 28th?
I'll make it.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Can we make it 1:07? Oh, never mind.
Well, thank you. All right, welcome back, please take your seats. We are reconvening our meeting. So, our, Elisa?
I'm ready.
I got him one more, one's not enough.
All right, again, welcome back, we're reconvening the Planning Commission meeting of December 10th, and our next item is a public hearing, 2015-029D, appealed by Ford Construction and CB Asphalt. And I am going to turn it over to Jason Bozer for staff presentation.
Actually, I'll start.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Peter.
So this is a continued several times from the August 13th hearing, the original hearing on the appeal. This is an appeal of the determination made under Section 1742-035, that requires the environmental health officer to review proposed changes in use or new construction in industrial zones, specifically the M2 zone in this location, to make a determination whether or not the materials used, the type of materials, wood, or may have a significant effect on the environment. The original appeal, there were a number of points that were raised by the appellant. You dispensed with all but one of those at your August 13th hearing. The remaining issue was the actual finding by the environmental health officer of whether or not this may have a significant effect. As you probably recall, you had requested that additional information be presented, be provided by the applicant, the appellant and project proponent, to allow the health officer, Jason Bateser, to consider existing rules and laws in effect that are intended to protect the environment. And so that's where we're at today, and I will turn it over to Jason to further explain the situation.
Thanks, Peter. Jason Bateser, Calvers County Environmental Health Director and Calvers County Air Pollution Control Officer. Also have Corey Moy, Air Pollution Control Staff, with me here to help answer any questions. So, thanks for the background. As you know, we're here to make a determination based on the type, method of use, quantity of substances, if there may be a significant effect on the environment associated with the substances. So, we looked at that and the information that was submitted by the applicant in our decision-making as we went through the process, and looked at all the materials that would be handled with the proposed asphalt batch plan. Wanted to go over some definitions, before we get started, too. I wanted to make one clarification noted in the staff report, and I apologize for the late notice, or the submittal of the staff report, part of that was on, based on when we received additional information from the applicant November 30th, a week and a half ago, and so for staff to process that information, and then, you know, our normal job duties in getting this out to you, so. But on page five, the bottom of the paragraph, bottom of the page, I just wanted to make note as we move forward, it talks about health risks, our human health risks, cancer and non-cancer risks such as emphysema, reproductive disorders, but does include, should be but does not, I probably read that 10 times, and my brain put in not, but did not include it, so apologies for that. So going over into some definitions that are key in our determination, as we go through this, is California, you'll hear different terminologies of different air quality standards and pollutants. One is the toxic air contaminant, which is an air pollutant that may cause or contribute to illness to public health. And focusing on that, the studies that we'll get into, that it's focused on public health hazards, so it's, you know, tax or suspected, or known to cause cancer, birth defects, neurological damage or death. As of right now, and we kind of went through this in the last, in the, I would just say last hearing, but the hearing regarding the, whether the air permit was discretionary ministerial, that there are no established ambient air quality standards for toxic air contaminants. They're managed on a case-by-case basis and by the project. Health risk and the calculation of the studies both by our engineer and by York are based on human health risk. O35 asks us to look at, in addition, environmental risk. So, when looking at the calculations by the engineers, and we looked at that, it was looking at the potential for, if there may be a significant human health risk, sometimes we use terms expected to be, not expected to be, but looking at tax that's specific to human health risk, and it does not include short or long-term environmental impacts. And again, we're going back to, on the project, if this, if based on the type, substances, method of use, and processes, if there may be or have the ability to significant effect on the environment. The environmental health officer looked at air quality as part of the media and environment, along with land, water, fauna, flora, and public health. So we looked at the stationary source, fugitive emissions, odors, long-term mobile source emissions. You'll see in the staff report that it was also addressed by our engineer and by the applicant's engineer. The stationary source plant emissions, the district received the authority construct, our district engineer reviewed the application, and reviewed it with compliance with our rules and regulations. And I note that our rules and regulations are based on human health risk, and the report did not consider potential impacts to the environment. So, it's specifically looking at the health risk to the receptors, and that source, and that process of the asphalt batch plant, so. We did speak to our district engineer and confirm that, you know, his, he did not look at the environmental risk with his report. His report acknowledges that there are going to be emissions from the asphalt batch plant, and at this point in time, that those emissions may have an impact to the environment. So, and also, and Mr. Kupai states in the August 13th report, that the operation of the plant would release various toxic air contaminants. During, also looking at is the fugitive from the asphalt batch plant, and to generate it, plant during normal operation, generate during the transport of hot mix asphalt, and also contain toxic air contaminants and sources of noxious odors. So, these emissions, you know, got into looking at different, the amount of trucks going in, you notice in the report, there were some discrepancies, whether it was two or six trucks, and from the York report, and to not look at the outgoing travel of trucks. Odors were looked at as a potential, that may have a significant effect on the environment. And this was acknowledged both by our district engineer and by the applicant's engineer, that there is a potential for odors from the plant, assuming normal operating conditions. The York report did state that odor impacts on residential areas and other sensitive receptors, and, as you can read that, and that a project with the potential to frequently expose members of the public to objectional orders should be deemed to have a significant impact. So this was, you know, brought to, our engineer noted it in his report, and it was also addressed in the York report of November 4th. The one thing that the report looked at was the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and where they quoted that, but the report did not include the further assessment and mitigation for air quality impacts for types of facilities. And this is a table from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, which York cites, but did not put in the table. And you can see that asphalt batch plant is in there as a type of facility that would require further assessment, and have that potential to have a significant impact if there's receptors within one mile of that plant. Also looked at long-term mobile source emissions, and again, the diesel fuel is what, was looked at in here, and the, and we talked about this our last hearing, that diesel exhaust contains 40 listed hazardous air pollutants or toxic air contaminants. I think it's important to note here that even, the studies did note that it is expected to not have a significant effect on human health, but again, that documented emissions, and don't know the extent of what impact those emissions would have on environmental Long-term, initially, York based the report on two incoming trucks. The report that we received November 30th estimated that the plant is operating at a capacity of 300 tons per hour at six incoming trucks. And so, it says that, you know, the significant, maybe below the significant public health thresholds, but did not analyze environmental risk. They did document toxic air contaminants and emissions, but did not look at what those potential effects may be to the environment. And it goes back to, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, is looking at the proximity of, you know, sensitive receptors of the, of one, the environment, but also the Calvers River as a public drinking water source. The number of trucks leaving the facility carrying the hot mix asphalt plant were not calculated by York in their report. Going through hazardous materials, there was question, you know, including initially, what hazardous materials we're going to include as part, or what is a hazardous material? In the report, it explains, it goes into that asphalt is not listed, the lists that were used were federal standards under ECPRA for extremely hazardous substances, or California accidental release prevention, which is a specific list of substances that are, that have off, major off-site consequences and are extremely hazardous substances. What we, in California, also has a definition that quantifies that hazardous materials and the material, that based on the quantity concentration or physical or chemical characteristic poses a significant present or potential hazard to human health. So, in this definition, both asphalt oil and diesel fuel are defined as a hazardous material. They both have material safety data sheets, which have, which is part of this definition, if you look at the code. Yes, these materials are not listed in the extremely hazardous substance list, but they are listed as hazardous materials, therefore have the potential to have an effect on the environment. The state reporting requirements for a hazardous material plan, which was submitted to the department to look at, the minimum thresholds, which requires, is 55 gallons of liquid, 200 cubic feet of compressed gas, or 500 pounds of solid. This is important to note, that we'll look at the quantities held at the site are much greater than this. It's been talked about, looking at other types of businesses, and, you know, whether it's an auto body shop, et cetera, some, you know, so that, an auto body shop might have a couple 55 gallons of oil, still has to complete a hazardous material business plan. The point of this is that looking at the quantity of the above-ground storage tank of the diesel fuel, the asphalt oil, and the throughput at the, at the site exceeds that, you know, the ability to may have a significant effect on, on the environment. Looking at the proposed added materials, we had different reports, but we considered all different sizes in our decision-making process. So initially, we had a diesel tank of 27,000 gallons, and then at the end, it changed to 5,800 gallons. That, the fluctuation there does not change our determination, it just changed in our time and the consistency of the information submitted by the applicant. We understand that there's a generator day tank there, for the generator where the diesel tank is plumped to, the main diesel tank, but we don't have a tank size for that tank. In addition, we have an asphalt oil heater tank there, with two different sizes of 18,000 or 27,162 gallons. The reports also showed that it has a potential of 3,000- The reports also showed that it has a potential of 3,000 tons of hot mixed asphalt per day and the application that was originally submitted to us was 250,000 tons of hot mixed asphalt. And so there's been a quick question of the 625 additional trucks. For us, looking at this is, you know, we also permit inspect retail fueling facilities and people that have tanks for their own private fueling. Operation on the low end, which was provided to us by the applicant is eighty-three days per year as a throughput on numbers that they provided of 262,280 gallons. That amount exceeds most of our retail fueling facilities. That's a significant amount of throughput and there is a potential that, an ability to have a spill on that process. In addition, you look at if they operated in the max of 310 days per year, that would be close to a million gallons throughput of diesel fuel at the site. So in review, you know, in our decision making process, we looked at the type of material that's stored and used, processed and transported in and out of the site. Quantity and point of use has more to do with increased handling of material that includes unloading of the hot asphalt, filling of the tanks, piping to the generator and heating tank. And these activities are in addition to the normal existing activities at the site. All of these, even sites that we permit have spills. They occur. Regulations are there to help prevent, but compliance doesn't mean that, that accidents, operational or mechanical will not or do not happen. So looking at O three five and what it comes back to is that there may be a significant effect to the environment, even with the compliance based on the quantity, the amount stored and the process at the facility. The upset and breakdowns are normal. It, it happens. Laws and regulations acknowledge that. That's why there's release reporting requirements. Some spills are greater than others, but again, filling of above ground tanks, underground tanks, the, you know, overfills occur. We had a spill last week at a site. So it's permitted. Underground storage tanks are some of our most stringent, prescriptive, regulated sites compared to above ground storage tanks or a hazardous material business plan. We had a spill this past year where a release occurred on piping, where the piping is tested monthly at a point two gallon per hour, point two gallon per hour monthly test. It's actually daily, but it has to pass at least one test per month and failed and leaked into the environment. So stuff does occur. Again, we looked at the throughput and, and the number of hazardous materials, amount of hazardous materials being processed. Did it calculate a diesel, whereas, you know, number of asphalt oil trucks coming in, two to six incoming trucks per day, outgoing trucks with the asphalt, if there's up to 3,000 ton per day would be about 150 vehicles outgoing. We've talked about this before, but also in our determination and looking at impacts, significant impacts, you know, there are receptors. There's within a mile of the site, there's 521 homes. We also have the Calaveras River. Yes, that some of the reports showed that there may not be a significant effect to public health, but we have not looked at, or the reports did not look at what the impact would be to the environment, to water quality, long term or short term, to see if that would impact that environmental media in a public drinking water source. And then we have the Genuin, Genuin Water Treatment Plant about 2,000 yards away. So in summary, in, after we reviewed all the material from the applicant and went through our decision making process, you know, that, that operations may have a significant impact on the environment, so the ability to, the proximity to receptors indicates a significant at-risk population. Upset breakdowns and other operational mishaps are normal for all facilities and need to be factored into risk assessment, independence assurance of compliance. Toxicity, person, genicity, and noxious order characteristics of materials and products indicate a potential for risk and harm and indisputable presence of regulated hazardous materials proposed at the site. And the proposed determination does not prohibit operation, but merely ensures imposition of conditions necessary to protect public health and the environment. So our conclusion is, and after reviewing and further analyzing the additional information with the assumption that the applicant will comply with all relevant laws and regulations, the health officer, the health officer's determination continues to be that the proposed asphalt plant, based on the type, method of use and quantity of hazardous materials proposed, may have a significant effect on the environment and therefore notified the planning director and recommend approval and validation of a conditional use permit. So that's our conclusion of the, of kind of going over our staff report and determination. Any questions?
Any questions of Jason?
Did, did you or your department make any requests to CB asphalt or Ford to address the environmental impacts?
In our letter of August 24th, it, we did, in reference, referencing O three five, we mentioned environment is listed, environmental effects. So, you know, in, in that, it was, I don't have the letter right in front of me, but yes, in that letter, it was referenced. So, you know, in, in the determinate, in looking at O three five, public health is part of the environment, but also there's other aspects in media that are part of the environment.
Do you have that letter?
I, I do right here. Would you like a copy?
It's attachment.
It's attachment what?
I don't know.
Four. Four.
I understand that we don't necessarily have our, our files, or at least I don't, listed as attachment one, two, three, four.
So is our August 24th letter the top of page two?
Okay, and it has a series of bullet points there?
Yeah, up, up on top.
So you're, so you're saying it's important to provide any and all information that documents how the applicant will reduce any potential significant effect on the environment associated with the substances and then it goes on. And underneath that, and then you say all estimates and other predictions required below shall be based on the assumption, then you have your assumptions. When I read that, I looked to the bullet points below there to tell me what specifically you were asking these people to provide. And when I go through that, I don't see any reference to effects on the environment other than maybe implied by what you've listed here. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, the, the laws here are looking at, you look at hazardous material business plan, SPC spill plan, hazardous waste, and then air quality, you know, is looking at estimate, estimate fugitive and asphalt emissions during transport. And, you know, going back to what we're asking for is not just, you know, the studies and, and it gets complicated, the studies for air quality specifically and what our engineer did and their engineer and even our rules and regulations are looking at public health significance. And, and yet, you know, in O three five and environmental, we're looking at too, the addition of what are the effects to the environment, you know? So, you know, it, and in the hazardous material business plan is, that is specifically, you know, meant for environmental protection. So that's, it's a hazardous material business plan is for emergency response and also environmental protection.
And they gave you that, didn't they?
They gave a, a draft plan.
Yes. Did you find anything deficient about it or incomplete about it?
It was inconsistent, the plan, and even in the light of the plan, that, you know, and what we discussed is that there are still the, you know, even when people operate, there's still the ability to have spills and leaks that may have a significant effect on the environment.
Are there any, is there any evidence or, or did you make any findings about the effect on the environment?
You know, it's, you know, we, what's that? Yeah, you, you know, looking at, we looked at the, some of the emission factors and the amount of tonnage of, of, you know, the PM-10 material, which is toxic air contaminants. It's hard for us to project when we're not the operators of the plant and don't know exactly if the piping for the above ground storage tanks are going to be single wall, double wall, if there's, if there's any type of prevention while they fill the tanks, containment from the hose disconnecting to the tank which prevents spills. So, you know, there's the, looking at the definition of O three five, there may be, and with the laws, the regulations, that there, there are spots that does not eliminate any chance of an impact to the environment. So we did look at the laws, we looked at the regulations, we looked at through normal operations, would there not be any effect to the environment? And if there is the possibility, the ability to have an effect on the environment based on the operations.
If I, if I may, so your standard was zero. There has to, they had to, there had to be a regulation or a standard or a mitigating factor that reduced to zero the effect of any possible accident spill or something.
I wouldn't say that it's zero, okay? That, you know, but going back to O three five, it's saying that it has the ability to, okay?
Yes, but you, your, your words just now were there still could be the possibility.
The, the ability to have an effect on the environment. So going off of O three five and through the operations of the plant and what the amount of material stored at the plant, that yes, they may have the ability to have a significant effect on the environment.
Okay, I understand that spills can occur and accidents can happen. In, in all of this massive material that I've, have here, I see only one attempt to quantify the probability or risk that would occur, and that's in the York report. And that has to do with the, the trucking of the asphalt oil. And under their analysis, they say they predict an accident every 54 years based on the truck traffic, the figures they were given, and an accidental release as to the trucks, not talking about the plant.
Sure.
Every 175 years. Is there any other evidence in your report or that we have before us that attempts to quantify or analyze the frequency or severity of accidents, spills, releases and so forth?
It's looking at operations and we looked at the throughput, which we put in our report, based on the numbers that were provided, diesel going through, and that increases the number of fills, amount of fuel being on site, filling the tanks and the amount of fuel being processed at the site, going through the system and looking at, you know, the mechanics of it. It, it, that's, it's a hard to quantify, you know, as far as amounts and, because we're not the operators of the plant and also don't know the construction of the plant because that was not submitted to, to us and we, how we know how the plant was going to be constructed and looking at different, as far as equipment and, you know, as far as standards that they're going to put in place. And so when we looked at it, we, you know, looked at that, the amount of material being processed and that the laws, you know, the hazardous material business plan law that's there, okay? It was asked to look at compliance with laws. That is, that specific law is meant to, or businesses tell the local agencies and fire departments, how much material is there, where it's located and how it's going to be stored. The spill prevention laws is required for above ground storage tanks to look at the storage of it in above ground storage tanks. There's different performance measures that are not prescriptive, unlike underground storage tank requirements, which we, which I mentioned in example. So to quantify, you know, that if throughput of, you know, 262,000 gallons versus a million gallons will have this amount of a release of fuel, the, we don't, the rules or regulations, you know, don't give us the ability to do that, but looking at our experience in sites that we've had, that, you know, the processing through, you know, spills do occur.
Well, was there any effort made, was there any question asked of CB Ford or CBSalt or Ford for them to try to quantify it?
We did. We went back and we, you know, won the information that they submitted to us. The initial November fourth information was different than the initial submittal. And then we asked for additional information and that they submitted on November 30th. One of the things that we asked for is they, and looking at the, the amount of toxic air contaminants was looked at, they looked at hydrogen sulfide specifically, which is not a TAC, but looked in the, but it is an air quality standard. And they did not look at outgoing traffic, which we had requested in our additional information.
I probably didn't make myself clear. We started this with the, with the observation that spills occur and accidental releases occur, not normal operation now, I'm talking about accidents. And as I said, York did an analysis of the probability of accidents involving the trucks. I think you're suggesting there is also a probability of accidents or a risk of accidents at the plant.
Yes.
Involving diesel fuel. Now my question is, did you ask CB asphalt or Ford or your own engineer to come up with some analysis of the magnitude of that risk? How likely is it once every hundred years, once every two weeks?
No, we did not ask for a specifically magnitude of risk because that's not in the existing rules and regulations and what, and looking at that.
Okay, but now you are telling us that you're, there may be a significant effect on the environment because of that risk, correct?
Yeah.
And we have no quantification of that, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
On the same subject, again, quantification of the risk. On page 12 of your staff report, second paragraph, second, first full paragraph, spills of hazardous materials do, underlined do, regularly occur at facilities. They regularly occur at facilities, in your opinion. And yet the only mention of an example is in the bottom paragraph, this past year, a permitted UST site in Calaveras County that passed the annual monitoring system certification suffered a pipe, piping leak. You make the statement that they regularly occur and you give us one example of, of such an occurrence, and that's all I can find. And you've got pages of references to, and quite an emphasis where, where your department did not previously on, on its O three five considerations. This, this report emphasizes the risks to, from accidents quite significantly. You would, you would agree that there's a big difference between the previous positions and this one?
This one we're going, looking at, yeah, on the previous O three five determination based on, and that was changed based on the directive from the planning commission to look at compliance with all, compliance with existing rules and regulations and also to be more comprehensive than we were in the initial determination.
Okay. Okay, you're saying it's, it's because of the direction from the planning commission to be, to include rules and regulations. And this is outside of that. So you're saying in spite of rules and regulations, this can happen?
This can happen.
Okay. And you say it happens regularly and yet you don't quantify that?
I mean, on, at this type of facility, spills do occur, whether it's, they do occur on a regular basis.
Okay, you mentioned in your comments just a moment ago, and I think in response to Mr. Rooster's question, that you were not given the data on the construction, data wasn't the word you used, the details on the construction of the plant. Now you were given the model number of, of the plant. Okay. So are you, are you saying you need how the manufacturer manufactures this model of plant?
No.
And it, and it- And, and second part of the question, and if you have that information, do you have the ability, the, the, the knowledge to evaluate how the plant is built?
So, our, our, the existing rules and regulations for both the hazardous material business plan, which our department oversees, and the spill prevention countermeasure control plan, the spill, the above-ground storage tank program, do not look at how, we don't have the authority on how a plant is constructed, okay? That is, the above-ground storage tank laws and how tanks are constructed are in the UNO fire code. And so, what we're saying is that with the information that was submitted, in our authority, we do not have that authority on the construction and for an above-ground storage tank plant. Now, with our experience as far as the fuels and the piping and that information, yes, we can look at, you know, based on if it's single wall pipe or double wall pipe, if there will be more of a risk to the environment versus, you know, versus one or the other. So, it's, it's looking at not just the asphalt batch plant, and we're talking about hazardous materials now, is the, the plant itself it's constructed, it's with the tanks and the opportunances of the piping and everything else, that we did not get that information. And, and again, a lot of our facilities that are constructed on, with as far as above-ground storage tanks, underground storage tanks, well above-ground storage tanks, let's talk about that, are, are on concrete. This one is on gravel, and a release would have a direct impact to the environment where we don't know as far as what type of containment they have besides their environmental media of sand or gravel that they have on site.
Okay. The sense that I get from reading your report is that no matter what the applicant provides in the way of proof of compliance with every regulatory body that they're, that they're faced with, and they are numerous, the fallback position, if I can use that term, is that there could be an accident and all of those regulations won't matter at that point?
Correct, with the operations and laws in, in the plant, that in looking at O-35, in looking at, you know, when I look at a law, I look at what the language says and what the order says.
We're going to talk about that.
Yeah, I know, but that, yes, they're may, with the normal operations, that if a mechanical and operational failure occurred, that the laws don't cover, yes, there may be a significant effect on the environment.
Okay, so it, it doesn't matter to you what the compliance is with every regulation, what matters to you is that in spite of all of that, an accident could happen. And that, so that becomes your, the foundation of your, of your position?
And also looking at too, that it, you know, an acci, you know, operate, yes, during normal operations, there, at this type of quantity and the method of use of materials, there may be an effect to the environment. And also looking at the information submitted and the inconsistencies of the information to, you know, looking at that is if, that was submitted to us, it was a moving target.
Well, talk about your moving targets. I mentioned the difference between your positions now and your positions a few months ago on, on this aspect of, of accidents. This is now the foundation of your opinion that a CUP is required. It's the foundation, it's clear from your report.
And also.
And yet, okay, the applicant didn't have the benefit of knowing that that's your position, that they can then react to it in their subsequent filings. That, that's a moving target. And neither do we, this commission. This is, this is a new position that we have to evaluate. And in as much as it is the foundation of your opinion, of your recommendation, and there's no quantification for it, there's no basis for it, other than you saying, these things, stuff happens, in your words.
It, but again, it's going back to the operations of a facility. It's going back to look at, you know, not just the hazardous materials, but the potential with the air emissions and the impacts, you know, when there's emissions in the air, they, it goes in the air and then it gets deposited onto the land and/or water. We have a public drinking water source nearby.
Well, I thought we were talking about accidents.
But we're, we're talking normal operations, okay? And that was going back to, even in normal operations, spills and leaks can occur. It's not just accidents.
Okay, I want to talk about the, the difference between human receptors and the environment in a second, I didn't want to get off track.
And from our last, and from the last planning commission meeting, it was the direction from the planning commission and, and, and wanting to make sure that we had an all-encompassing look at, at the process and using the decision tree and going, moving forward.
Okay. You're saying that the, that it can't be quantified, the accident factor can't be quantified. Am I right?
Yeah, but I would not just say accident factor, I would say operations. Things happen, so I mean.
Accidents in normal operations, accident factor. That, that, that is a fair phrase for it, isn't it?
No.
Okay? Accidents that happen in normal operation of an asphalt plant with onsite diesel tanks and et cetera, et cetera.
But even just, besides just accidents, normal operations, okay? It's not just focused on accidents, it's also focused on normal operations.
Okay, in a normal operation, you can have an overfill. Okay, I call that an accident.
Well, to me, okay.
Okay.
It can be an accident.
I was making an all-encompassing sort of phrase that describes things that can happen that are big, things that can happen normally in everyday operation, can happen. Okay, asphalt plants aren't new, we agree, they're, they've been around for a very, very long time.
Correct.
Was there any data out there available to you that quantifies the accident history of asphalt plants, pick whatever region or nationally that you want to, that, that you could at least say such as this?
There, I mean, you would have to go through different databases as far as federal and state release reporting requirements to look at that. We did look at that and, you know, potential, our data did not have the, the time to specifically research all the different potential releases. We looked at, did searches and staff, and we did find where there have been releases. But also looking at, this wasn't, you know, looking at the operations and the method of use isn't something new that we look at, where we look at if there may be a significant effect on the environment, how the tanker truck hooks up to the above-ground storage tank to fill up at the site when we were there too, and it's not addressing the plan, you know, that how, as far as drips and spills from that and, and a breakage of, of the filling of the tank. Those things happen, it's part of operations and it may, they may happen and they may have a significant effect on the environment.
So, can I ask a question here?
Yeah.
Is, um, one thing, is it because you can't quantify a risk, doesn't mean that it doesn't exist? And your charge, Jason, was really to determine by the nature of the hazardous materials that would be used, and you specifically mentioned diesel fuel and asphalt oil, that according to O-3, that just the use of those materials by, just on its face, is enough to require closer scrutiny with a conditional use permit?
Correct.
Is that?
Yes.
So, we weren't asking, you didn't have to show, do a risk assessment or some survey of how often that might happen, it was just the fact that those materials were being used would then trigger O-35?
Based on the method type, use and quantity, correct?
Okay.
To be able to trigger O-35.
I disagree that the existence of the hazardous material on site, it is enough to trigger the CUP, I mean, the, based on the type, method and use, and we talked about this pretty extensively a few months ago, based upon the type, method and use and quantity suggests that there are, there's some details that, that we would need, that you would need to make an evaluation, and mitigating factors and regulations included. So, how can you, how can we fall back on a, on a global concept that just the existence of those materials on site is enough to trigger it?
It's not just the, the materials on site, but it's also the method of use.
Volume.
And the quantities in which, you know, Vaughn just mentioned, and looking at, and in the operations, based on if there may be a significant effect on the environment. We weren't doing a full risk assessment on, and weren't, the O-35 doesn't require us to do that, nor were we, you know, tasked to do that. Even the, and looking at the engineers on some of their studies, did not do a full risk assessment, if we're going to get into, you know, the nuts and bolts of a risk assess, assessment. You know, the fact is, is that, you know, we looked at it as, and, and the quantities here are, are in amounts that are not normal business operations for a lot of our facilities in county, and also looking at the potential of impact based on the quantities stored, processed, and the potential to have that significant effect to the environment. So, we looked at it all, okay? And we looked at the processes, we looked at the amount of material on site and the method of use and made our determination.
Okay.
And, and so, you know, it's not, and we're not saying that the process, the plant can't go in, saying that there's, that due to the materials on site, the process, the process and the method, and with existing rules and regulations, there still be, may be a significant effect on the environment.
Because of the potential for an accident, in your view, so.
And even, and even the normal.
And it doesn't quantify that, it doesn't say that in O-35 because, it just says if you are going to be using these, and if the method of use and the quantity of substances such that, you know, that the type may be significant, or, I'm sorry, let me just read it. "The health officer shall review the plan or list to determine," the list being the materials, "to determine if the type, method or use or quantity of substances is such that there may be a significant effect on the environment associated with those substances." Doesn't, that's, and then that goes on to say then, they notify the planning director, but it doesn't, there, there isn't other add-on language about if, ands or buts, or risk assessments, or how big or how small.
Okay, so let me, let's go to O-35, let's go back to O-35, let's have the same O-35 discussion we had a few months ago. Under your interpretation of O-35, an auto body paint shop that's normally permitted under C-2 in this county, even if it went to C, even if it went to industrial, see, we've got two industrials, right? One and two? Which, which.
It's actually three zones in which this provision applies, M-1, M-2 and M-4.
Okay, even if an auto paint shop, auto body paint shop, which is normally permitted under C-2, went to the extreme and went to an industrial site with, with, with the most allowance for, for use that you can get, because an accident could happen at the auto body paint shop, for example, a fire could occur and you've got paints and solvents and, you know, stuff burning in the air, creating a really problem, a real big problem, an auto body paint shop would not be permitted in this county anywhere without a conditional use permit.
That, that, that's, that's not what we're saying. One, we didn't look at fire. Two, normal operations, an auto body shop is contained within a room, the normal quantity size does not exceed five gallons of meth, of acetone or solvent that's used, they're paints in one core containers, most of them don't have to comply with the hazardous material business plan act. So, to me, we're starting to compare apples and oranges, because their quantities don't even require them to submit a hazardous material business plan. You look at the quantities of the site here, whether it's a 27,000 gallon diesel tank, 12,000, 5,000 gallon, 18,000 gallon asphalt oil tank, or 27,000 gallon asphalt oil tank, the quantity, method and of use and type and outdoors, on gravel, 800 feet away from the river, public receptors has the potential, may have the ability to have a significant effect on the environment. And, and we're not saying that, we're not saying that the asphalt plant can't go in, we're not, we're looking at O-35 determination in the language that's in front of us.
I have one quick question. Given everything that the applicant has supplied in terms of how they operate the plant, the truck trips and all the information that you have, what, what additional conditions would you think would be appropriate to be imposed under O-35?
You know, part of it is, is, you know, what I think in this is where going through a conditional use permit here would probably be better answer as far as what the conditions may be, but, you know, as far as the site, as far as looking at protection to make sure to further minimize the impact, potential impact to the environment, is there going to be secondary containment? What, is there going to be, as far as water quality, is what type of stuff is going to be done there? You know, there's, that's where this conditional use goes into, I don't have, you know, I have some potential ideas in my mind, but a further study to look at, how do we minimize that potential impact to the environment and what those conditions may be?
So far, as best I can tell, the potential impacts arise from what Mr. Tuno calls accidents, what I would say in my mind includes any spill, any release that's not planned or intended, okay? And I'm having trouble seeing what, what more these people would be expected to do to minimize that, that risk, other than what they've already gone and done.
Okay, and we're, this is a global scope, this is a, you know, we're looking at, you know, we're, now, now we're talking about hazardous materials. The applicant also brought up odors and that it acknowledged that there may be odors and that if it's within resident sense of receptors within a mile of a facility, it's going to have a significant impact. So, if there's, when we looked at our determination, we looked at all possibilities of, of that, and that's normal operation of odors. It was acknowledged in the York report, it was acknowledged by our engineer, and looking at San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, which the report cited, is that as far as that odors would require further analysis and have a significant effect, but didn't use the table, and we looked at the table, in the sense of receptors, within one mile, there's 521 homes. So, you know, it's, though, it's looking at the meteorological conditions, further analysis and looking at what type of impacts those would have on the environment and receptors.
If I could chime in here, the, the determination under O-35 doesn't necessarily get at what conditions might be imposed. We may find through the conditional use permit process that there are no further conditions that can limit that, but the process then of the conditional use permit is to decide whether the use should be allowed. If, if the determination is that no conditional use permit is required, that there, there may not be a significant effect on the environment, then it's a permit, it's a use allowed by right. And, and the limitations on conditions are those that are normally applied through ministerial type of applications. Now, we have already made the determination that the issuance of the air pollution permit is discretionary and conditions associated with air quality are, you know, those may change based on the factual matters of this specific operation. But the, if it's found that there may be a significant effect, then it becomes discretionary. And the conditions and the decision to approve or deny the application rests then with the planning commission as opposed to, does it meet our code or not, yes or no, at our, at my level? That's the difference. It's not so much whether or not we can fully mitigate every single impact and reduce any potential possibility of spill, I don't think we can do there. It's a risk assessment then of, is it in the community's interest to approve this project and how we do so?
Okay, and given what you said, I was going to ask this question anyway, because Mr. Betts said he's not, he's not opposed to the, you know, not saying that a site can't be, an asphalt plant. asphalt plant can't be cited there. On page eight of his report, at the top of the page, first full paragraph, "To the extent that the asphalt plant exposes the public to frequent objectionable odors, the applicant will not be able to comply with air district rule 205." Now, there's no way that you can have blacktop without having an odor. It just does.
Right.
Okay? So, and people driving by roads that are being paved are exposed to the odor. People that live on a road, dump, asphalt trucks go down just about every road at one point or another. That's an objectionable odor. This sentence says to me, if you can't, if you can't zero that out, you don't comply with rule 205 and Mr. Betzer's opinion. Now, but I want to expand on that. The, the, much if not most of the issue with respect to exposure to the public comes from the trucking component, correct? The trucking of the, of the asphalt, blacktop down the roads.
And, and the plant itself.
Right. Two different ones. I want to go with, I want to go with the trucking, but if you know, if you have an idea, which is the bigger impact, the trucks or the plant?
I don't think, we asked for the fugitive emissions to be looked at from the trucks, and they weren't analyzed as far as the, from, from the trucking, correct, Vaughn?
Okay. Maybe at some point during the day, we can get a relative difference here.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
But, but let's talk about it as, as two separate things. Because the Kapai report, did I pronounce his name right?
Yes, you did.
He's dealing with the, with the trucking, right?
He looked, his report looked at, the initial report looked at the stationary source, and then the other report did look at the trucking.
Okay, so he's looked at both.
And the trucking, he looked at the, as far as toxic air contaminants, and did not look at the odor aspect of it, correct, Vaughn?
Right. Okay, so I can't deal with 205 right now, but I can deal with toxic air contaminants, both from the diesel emissions, from the engine itself, and from the, the fumes from the blacktop, right? He's looking at both. Am I right?
Well, that we, as far as, he did the study to look at the mobile emissions. We permit the source itself. Rule 205 nuisance is for the source. Rule 205 does not apply to the trucking.
Okay. The pollution factor...
So, looking, just to make sure we're clear on, clear on that.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure I know how to deal with 205 right now, but I want to deal with the, the trucking, the emissions from the trucking, both the diesel fumes and the, the fumes from the...
Fugitive.
Fugitive fumes from the blacktop that's in the truck itself. Is it not true, I mean, assuming the same level of use of blacktop in our county before and after, same level, okay? We're not paving any more roads, miles of roads per year than we would otherwise. Isn't the emissions from the trucks the same with or without this plant being cited in our county?
No. No, because...
More trucks, please.
Did you understand the premise?
I do, I do. So, you're talking because some of the trucks could be outgoing to other counties?
All of the trucks with blacktop, without a plant in our county, all of the trucks carrying blacktop are coming from outside the county.
Correct.
Okay? So, the difference is, if you put a plant here, the trucks are coming from within the county, carrying blacktop, instead of outside of the county. They're all driving, wherever they go from there is wherever the blacktop is needed.
But in addition, there'd be more trucks because the, the plant would be producing for jobs in outside the county too.
They're already producing the rock. Those trucks are already on the road. It's, I mean, we're adding a couple trucks a day. We're in, if you took those two trucks a day that we're currently looking at adding, and you subtract that from those coming in county, because we don't have any services available here, that number doesn't work, Jason. I mean, I'm having some real issues here. I look at the APS report that you, it's, it's a very rough report, I get that. I look at the York report, I look at the word insignificant over and over again in those reports. And instead of even considering the word insignificant, we jump to maybe significant. It, it's, it's a quick flip. And I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No. You're on target here.
And when we go to rule, when we go to rule 205, I, I can go to rule 205, I can say there's odors, but I look at the M two zone, and I think, that's why it's zoned M two. So, when there is a business that's going into industrial, that's the proper place for it. Now, if you were taking that and you were putting it on a commercial zone that could be surrounded, you know, in the middle of the community in a town, I get that, that's different. But we're dealing with an M two zone that is set up for the rule 205. When I'm looking at the emissions on the road, and I'm reading the diesel fuel exhaust, which, that one completely caught me off guard being in this report, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, but I don't think adding two trucks a year is going to change that exhaust. And I don't think that when we're looking at, not a year, excuse me, per day. Up, 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 please. When we're also looking at that, I'm looking at, I mean, it sounds like we're all going to die tomorrow, is, is the way that this reads? Because our children are standing right in front of diesel buses lining up at the schools. They're not dead, yet.
And, you know, the, the report is, well, the report is looking at, you know, looking at O three five as the method, type, of use. Odors are not bound by a boundary. So, you look at odors, and they refer to it in the York report, and it does look at in the San Joaquin Valley, is asphalt batch plant specifically, receptors within one mile of the facility. I, I understand that the zoning may be M two, but there's 500, when we looked at our, at what was submitted to us in the reference document, and, and, you know, speaking of odors and the stationary source, there is the, it requires further assessment to see what type of mitigation measures in meteorological conditions, et cetera, would impact during certain hours of operation. They say they're going to operate during the day and during the evening at times. Some of those may have more significant odor impact at times than others, but the point looking at the reference that York did in the engineering report was, yes, with the orders, there may be a significant effect, especially within one mile of the asphalt plant, the air districts rules that they referenced in their report. So, as far as the mobile emissions, the, the, our, our engineer did say, you're correct, that the, is expected to be less than significant, okay?
Insignificant. Insignificant.
Yeah, expected to be insignificant, and that's health risk, okay? Which health risk is a one risk, an environmental risk. Is, is there saying that if there, you know, as far as the health, would not impact the public? Yeah, there's a good chance it wouldn't be, but also, looking at the number of vehicles now coming in and out, is 100, with 3,000 tons per day, is 150 vehicles per day. If they operate at maximum capacity, and, and that would give them 83 days of operation.
I think we have the potential for less impacts of trucks coming in and out, because we're not going to be hauling it in from out of county. We can buy it local at a better price. I mean, economically, it is there.
But I, I understand what you're saying, but O three five didn't, that wasn't part of looking at our, our determination.
O three five says, is it, is it going to be significant? The reports that we got say insignificant.
No, again, O, O three five says, again, and I just, it went away, but basically, it, it says, will there be hazardous materials used? And will those materials be of such size, method of use, or quantity that they may have an effect on the environment? That's, that's, that's the test. I mean, all of this discussion about, you know, what could, could happen or couldn't happen, or how many trucks, it's like, to me, that's really irrelevant. I mean, we're asking one question here.
Okay, then this report is irrelevant, Vaughn, because that's what this whole report's about. It's not talking about those chemicals anymore. When we met before, it was about the chemicals. We were talking about the bitumen, the benzene, the whatever. That's what we talked about at the last hearing. And then we show up, and this report doesn't even address those chemicals anymore. It's gone in a whole new direction.
No, sure it does. It's, it's gone in a new direction.
It does. No, it went into, and you can't tell us, we can't talk about it, because it brings up the emission.
I'm not, I'm just asking to have a, I'm not suggesting you can't talk about it, but I am suggesting maybe I could talk about it just for a second.
Absolutely.
And that, wait, wait. So, in this report, it does identify that there are two hazardous materials being used, asphalt oil and diesel fuel. So, that's the first test of O three five, will there be materials used? The answer is yes. Now, also, O three five says, you know, so we don't go back to the body shop, is, are they of such quantity, method of use, and...
Type.
Type, that they could pose a, an effect?
Significant.
A significant effect on the environment? That, that's the questions that we're really being asked, and that's what we're here to determine. And to me, talking about number of trucks, odors, is insignificant.
Well, wait a second. This is where, this is where we differ.
Evidently.
Ms. McLaughlin. Back when we...
Well, it's not the first time.
Back when we had our discussion of what this commission believed O three five meant, we agreed, and it's, it's here in our packet, that O three five was not ambiguous, not unconstitutional, correct?
Right.
Okay. That doesn't mean, at least from this commissioner's point of view, that O three five didn't mean that an analysis had to take place in order to make these determinations, and that comparisons had to take place, that you couldn't just look at those words and, and not use your common sense, and not do a, a scientific analysis, and not make comparisons, and since we don't know asphalt plants in this county, well, we do kind of, because we've had them permitted before, but since we don't have a lot of experience with it, you, maybe you go to other counties and see what happens. That doesn't mean that you, you live in a vacuum in a closet and interpret O three five. At least that's not why I agreed that it was unambiguous, because my understanding of O three five, my belief in its unambiguity includes those factors, because that, to me, is the only way that it makes any sense at all.
So, what happens next is after you do determine, yes, there are materials used, and of the type and the quantity and, and method of use, and that too, they could have a significant effect on the environment, that's when you do your assessment. Then it triggers a conditional use permit. You're not saying that, that none of that's going to take place, or you're, but that, but that is the threshold that needs to be met in order to move to the next step, to say...
But then, Ms. McLaughlin, that's, that's the point that I made earlier. Under that assumption, everything needs a conditional use permit, everything. Everything has to go through that process. A warehouse that, that has diesel-powered vehicles, and they have a large tank that the power, that they fill up their own tanks with, would be, the, the quantity of use would be significant, hundreds of gallons beyond the, the level that you showed us earlier. And that would, that would trigger the same kind of review, because an accident could happen.
We, we have to look at every operation within its, you know, the, based on the method, type, and quantity of materials and operations. I've inspected asphalt plants before, so I didn't live in a vacuum in Calaveras County, so, and seen some of the releases, you know, and just ongoing as part of the operations. And, and, you know, again, it's looking at this, you know, the ability to have a significant effect on the environment, and, and even in the absence, you know, looking at compliance with all rules and regulations, you know, hiccups occur in the operations, and, and there may be, you know, a significant effect, so.
Would this be a good time to take lunch? Because I'm about to start on odors.
Sure. So, well, would one o'clock be all right, 45 minutes?
Give us another.
1:15?
Yeah.
Where recessed till 1:15?